So I'm going to welcome everybody to the May 20th. Yeah. I'm going to invite, welcome everybody to the May 20th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. I'll go through, through the agenda. Then do a roll call for attendance and then we'll start with the public hearings. The agenda tonight is including a continuance request for a public hearing for Institution for Savings. A public hearing continued from our last meeting for 3135 Market Square, Vera Restorante. A public hearing for the Daily Group, 81012 and 18 Colby Farm Lane also continued from our last meeting. And a new public hearing for Sports Medicine North, 20 Graff Road for a major site plan review and special permit. After that, we have other business. A minor site plan review for Zero Parker Street, which will be continued. A request for a lot lease at Chandell Estates. A request for minor modification at 266 J Merrimack Street. And a request for minor modification at the Reserve at Bashaw Farm. We'll then approve minutes, have any updates, and that will be the end of our meeting. So let's start with a roll call of participants for tonight. James Bruegger.
Here.
James, are you there? Beth Delio.
Yeah, here.
Here.
Now, I know you are, Beth.
I'm here, yes.
Um. Okay, folks, unmute yourself for the time being. It might be easier than trying to drop in and out. Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford.
Here. Could you hear me, Bonnie?
McGovern. Yes, I did, Tanya.
Here.
Oh, is that Lee?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, here, and Tanya said here, too.
Rick here?
Here. Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Yes, I know, thank you. Right, I mean MJ, Don Walters.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, MJ. Don, thank you, and I'm here. I don't know if there's such a delay because we have video. Andy, do you think we should turn off video if that could be the issue?
Yeah, two, two comments about that. One is there is more of a delay with the video, I do know that. The other issue, and that's, it's a second or two, I don't know exactly how it works, but there is a momentary delay when you use the video. The other thing I would say is that it's not an option we can change during the meeting. It has to be done beforehand.
Well, we're going to be stuck with a lot of delays. I think Planning Board members, if you think there's enough, going to be an opportunity to speak, or if I'm taking a vote, would you please unmute yourselves in advance? Because we have to take a roll call vote on every single vote that we take. So that would be really helpful. There may be an additional delay if we're waiting for you to unmute yourself. Is that clear?
Bonnie, I think we can each individually stop our video.
Yeah.
So if we each individually stop the video, that might speed things up.
Yep.
All right, let's try that. Everybody turn off your video and decide what you're going to do about muting. But I'd appreciate it if you could unmute yourself when we start to take a vote, at least, if not during conversation. Okay, we will begin with the first public hearing in Institution for Savings, 93 State Street. Site plan review, ITIF special permit and DoD special permit. They have requested to continue until June 3rd. And before we take this, I ask for a motion, I just want to let everybody know that their revised plans will be posted tomorrow, which will give all of us, including the public, two weeks to review those designs and plans. So may I have a motion to continue this public hearing to June 3rd, please?
So moved.
Who's that?
Second, Rick.
Rick moved, yeah. Who's the second?
I think Don moved and Rick seconded.
I'm sorry.
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All those in favor? Let me take a roll call. James Bruegger.
Abstain.
Thank you. Beth Delisle.
Yes.
Anne Gardner.
Yes.
Tanya Hartford.
Yes.
Liam McGovern.
Yes.
Rick Tainter.
Yes.
MJ Verde.
Yes.
Don Walters.
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. So we will see them at our next meeting. Moving on to 3135 Market Square, DoD special permit. This is for Vera Restorante, in particular, the windows. We have no new information from the applicant. So I'm going to recommend a facilitation plan for this meeting. And it goes as follows. I'll overview it and then we'll get started. I will give a list of the documents that the Planning Board members have reviewed in preparation for this application discussion. Then we will take comments from members of the Historical Commission. Then we will take public comment. And when we've closed public comment, we will hold a discussion between the applicant, Planning Board members, and as they would like to participate, members of the Historical Commission. When we see our way through to a possible decision, we will clearly state our findings. And then we have two choices, either to continue if we need additional information or drawings from the applicant, or we will take a vote if we feel like we have all the information we need. So that's the plan for this application review. And let me just begin by saying that we have reviewed for this application, the downtown overlay district ordinance as amended, the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation and any other relevant standards from the Secretary of Interior. The Massachusetts Historical Commission Service Form B for the site known as West Row dated May 1999. And then there are, there is a historical photo showing a hardware store with windows having nine panes of three glass, of glass and three columns, a current photo of West Row, and a special permit application drawing of the proposed window configuration posted on March 10th. And last but definitely not least, the Historical Commission report dated April 23rd. So at this point, I'd like to take comments from members of the Historical Commission, if any of them would like to speak at this time. Andy, do we have anyone raising their hand?
We do, Glenn Richards is, I think, going to announce himself.
Yeah, hi, I assume you can hear me, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll just be very brief. You summed it up nicely, Chair Bonnie. The, and I reviewed my report prior to this and also took another look at the DoD ordinance as well. So I guess my, my brief summary is that pretty much what I said in the most recent report pretty much still holds. The, this, yeah, this is, thank you, Randy, this is a good illustration. So you see an early shot of the area of that building. We don't know exactly when it is. It's some, sometime in the early 20th century, I believe. And then, as it is today with the Vera Restaurant there. And pretty, you can see that, as has been suggested, the current windows were probably put in as similar or in-kind quote-unquote replacements during urban renewal or rehab, or whatever you want to call it, when that whole, you know, all over the city, these buildings are being restored and rehabilitated. However, but they kept the same basic format of, and there's a large opening that has basically nine lights or panes. In the Vera, the photo on the right, you can't see the top row simply because it's behind the awning, but they're there. And so, and that's a very typical commercial storefront. Nothing really strange there. So what we said in the report, and I think still, you know, I still would stand by is that if, you know, we don't take a stand, we, meaning the Historical Commission or myself personally, take a stand on whether it should be okay or not okay to have windows that are operable. I can see both sides of that argument and it's not, I don't view that as, that per view as a Historical Commission. But I do think that when they are closed, they should closely resemble the format and appearance and sightlines that are there today, which is also, if you looked at the Form B, you would see that, I can't remember if the awnings were there or not in the Form B, they might not be, but there's a historical precedent for awnings. In fact, if you notice in the old picture on the left, I see frames there, particularly on the, the brick building that has the, was it Citizens Electric, something or other office? You can see there's a frame for an awning, so that's certainly not, you know, inappropriate addition. So, but the restaurant is planning to actually change the opening in the sense that above the lower six lights, it would be more sizable separation than a fixed light, a fixed set of lights or windows above that. And then the lower six panes or lights would be replaced with either three or four operable sections, depending on which bay you're talking about. The, if you're looking at, on the right-hand picture, the first bay is, you know, three panes or wide, then there's the door, then another one that's three, then the last one before the other door is actually four, it's a wider opening. So in any event, and I, we think that the problem, potential problem, I should say, is that in order to make an operable window, it's probably going to be necessary to have much wider muntens, because you're going to have, to have hinges and hardware and all kinds of things. Yeah, you can see it here. In fact, if you just quickly cast your eye between the, the existing elevation, that's the top row, let's just take the first one on the left and quickly go down to the one immediately below it, you can immediately see how much smaller the window lights are and how much wider the, the muntens are between. And that's, you know, probably necessitated by the, you know, the, what I described as the need for hardware and hinges and all that stuff. So that's, you know, kind of where I see it. And, you know, the ordinance is pretty clear that the historic appearances should be preserved as much as possible. So if a way can be found to do that instead of operable windows, you know, the Commission didn't have any objection to that, as I understand it. But we do think that it's important that the, the historical sightline be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I've got to announce myself, but I think it's Glenn Richards' report to Kent Street and Historical Commission Chair.
Thank you, Glenn. Is there anyone else from the Historical Commission who would like to speak?
Yes, we have Patricia Pelnik. Pelnik, are you able to announce yourself?
Yes, I'm Patricia Pelnik, I'm the Vice Chair. I wanted to give the Planning Board a sense of how the Historical Commission looked at this application. I, I know that during the last meeting of the Planning Board, various restaurant windows downtown were discussed as sort of possible models for what might happen at, at West Row Building and Market Square. We talked about the fact that the Port Tavern is in the 84 State Street Building, which was built in 1940 and was the AMP grocery store. So for that building to have those full vertical windows there does comport with that building's history, we thought it was a very different case than altering the windows in a similar fashion on a building from 1811 that has been preserved. Likewise, Agave is an 1820 building, but the whole first floor storefront is modern construction from the urban renewal period. That's why it wasn't really problematic to allow that modern design there. Same thing at SIA, those first floor windows were altered in the 1970s. You might remember Rockfish had the vertical operable windows before SIA moved in. But the DoD ordinance, as we understood its intent, is that new alterations shouldn't simply imitate whatever the most recent design trends were in retail or dining, sort of, but, but be modeled on documentary evidence of the original historic windows. That's why we went to the archival center at the library and looked at the earliest photographs of the windows. So the way we understood this, this problem is that without the DoD ordinance, if there were a 31 to 35 Market Row tenant that was a jewelry store, it would have been possible to look at the other windows of jewelry stores in the area like Benati and Azarian. They have those large plate glass windows. Because in that case, the replacement windows simply refer to other replacement windows. It seemed to us that that practice led to the loss of much of the sort of first floor exterior historic fabric of downtown. So we looked at the Secretary of Interior Standards and at the National Park Service Brief on Historic Storefronts, which emphasizes the importance of restoring storefront windows to a pattern and style that as closely as possible comports with the appearance of the original historic windows. And Brief 11 says that it's important to consider the relationship of the storefront windows to the windows and features of the upper stories, and, and they must be coherent with the surrounding buildings. Finally, we looked at the DoD ordinance that says, "When replacing or restoring an exterior architecture, architectural feature that has been altered, the approved design shall be based upon documentation of such exterior architectural feature as it originally existed." The Commission even sort of recruited, one of our newest, our newest member, Joe Morgan, a new Commissioner. We recruited him with challenges like this one in mind. Mr. Morgan practiced architecture in Boston for 40 years. And most of his work was institutional, higher ed, with a focus on science and technology buildings. So we really looked to his expertise to figure out whether a contemporary operable window could be designed for this historic storefront. We, working with Joe, we determined that operable windows, when closed, would have to look similar to the large pane divided light windows that the Chair was pointing out in the windows and the historic photos. And Mr. Morgan explained that it's possible to have both, the historic look and the operability, but that wooden frames wouldn't, it wouldn't be possible to use wooden frames, that a steel frame window would give the look and the functionality. And finally, we considered that Market Square is a public square. That it's not, we can't really compare it to State Street. It's a special gathering place. Market Squares have played a really important role in American history. This one in particular, and is a place where people gather to, you know, protest whatever events they're unhappy with, celebrate, sit, hang around. So we were aware of the need to be very delicate in advising the Planning Board that the design of these windows needs to preserve the sort of aesthetic coherence of the square and remain true to sort of its historic use as, as public space. So that's the process that we went to, and I believe that our conclusions are accurately reflected in the Chair's advisory report. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else from the Historical Commission who wants to add comments at this time?
I don't see anybody on the list, Bonnie, who's here.
Okay, then we'll move, thank you very much to both of the speakers. We will move on to public comment.
Chair Sontag?
Yes?
Yeah, my apologies, Joseph Morgan just raised his hand, I guess he's here, if you want.
Oh, good, great, wonderful, thank you.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. This is Joe Morgan of the Historical, Historical Commission. And I wanted to thank Commissioner Pelnik for her, her description of the, of the facts here and the history of our decision. I think it's very accurate. I, I just wanted to add, if, if, if you'll, if you'll allow me, just one further detail on nomenclature, I think it's very important here, just to bring a little bit more awareness to what a storefront is. We've been talking about windows and storefronts almost interchangeably, but when you refer to the Secretary of the Interior standards, they are very, very, very distinctive features. And, and that's the, the language, they are, they are building features. And many times, they are responsible for making a building historically significant. And the difference, the specific difference of a storefront is that it is unlike windows, even though it can, it can permit the same functions of natural light and, and view, they are there for a commercial aspect. And that is to allow a large field of vision to the interior from the exterior. So it allows pedestrians to see merchandise displayed in these commercial, these old commercial storefronts. So when we replace, if we propose to replace a storefront feature with more of a window feature, that is an inaccurate, I think, response to preservation or even rehabilitation. And I think that what has been proposed by the owner originally was really that. It was to really think of these as windows and not to really appreciate the historical significance and function of the storefront. So that's the only clarification that I have. I hope it allows everyone to appreciate a bit more what we're really talking about here along Market Square.
Thank you very much.
Chair?
Yes?
Could I ask a question of the last speaker?
Yeah, why not, if it's urgent?
Just clarification. So are you saying that the, that we should not be reviewing these under the category of windows in the DoD? We should treat them as something else, but the, the standards for windows do not apply?
They are storefronts technically per the Secretary of the Interior standards for the treatment of historical buildings. Now, I don't believe the DoD breaks it down further into that specific feature. Presumably even the DoD lumps it under windows. So that distinction, I don't believe, is made in the DoD.
Thank you.
Anyone else need a clarifying question asked at this point? Okay, so does that cover all of the Historical Commission attendees, Andy?
It does.
Okay, so now we will go on to public comment. And as we do in our face-to-face meetings, please introduce yourself and give your address and restrict your comments to two minutes. If you agree with someone else's comments and just have one thing more to add, you don't need to repeat, but just say that and then go on with what you would like to add. So we'll open it now for public comment.
So we have Counselor Augerman.
Shall I go ahead?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair Sontag. Jared Augerman, 83 High Street, I'm the Ward Two Counselor and the President of the City Council. I spoke on this before, first, I, I think the, those three speakers from the Historical Commission added real value. I don't need to repeat what, what they said. I would just add a couple things. The word storefront appears in the DoD ordinance only once. It talks about missing historic exterior architectural features. And it says, "When replacing or restoring an historic exterior architectural feature that is missing or has been significantly altered, such as storefronts, ellipses, the approved design shall be based upon accurate documentation of such historic exterior architectural feature." Well, the point I wanted to make is, if you really were very strict on the Secretary of Interior standards and the DoD ordinance, which incorporates them by reference, and that was really the whole purpose of the DoD, you probably wouldn't allow operable windows at all. But that's not what I'm hearing from the Historical Commission, and I haven't heard anyone say that. We recognize that there's a good land use reason for operable windows. And I think the Historical Commission has given, months ago, a path forward for the applicant. And it's really up to the applicant to take it. If, if we can't, if he can't take it, then I, I think the application absolutely must be refused. It has to be denied. Or really, the DoD, this, it doesn't mean anything. And that's six years of work, you know, town to train. This is ground zero for the historic downtown. You know, there was no Bull Nose before 1975. That was a creation and a lot of investment went into the site. It was meant to be the epicenter of the rebirth of Newbury Port. And it, it really is not too much to ask, given the very thoughtful and considerate, I think, report that you heard from the Historical Commission, for, to find a design that is sympathetic to the historic, historic fabric and yet is operable. So again, I, I really think it's imperative that either the design adheres to what the Historical Commission has asked for, or it be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
We have Stephanie Nikotic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I agree with all of the previous speakers, and I want to thank the Historical Commission for the amount of time that they put into this. They put in a, a good deal of time. And their historical report reflects the only advice they ever gave to the applicant, as far as I know, and I attended their meetings. My concern, which I, I did send you an email, I'm not going to read the whole thing, course, to stay within the two minutes. And I'm, I apologize that I submitted it so late. Chair Sontag. My concern is that I, is, is, aside from, I don't like the, the windows being applied for, my concern is that the, there's a procedural error here. The applicant has called the existing windows nonhistoric, but has offered no evidence for it. And there has not been, or I have not seen, that the applicant submitted a, a window inventory. This is required, and the Planning Board can't even waive it, never mind the applicant. So that hasn't been done. And once you have the window inventory, it, it is the Planning Board's determination of whether the existing windows are historic or not. We've seen pictures of a early 20th century picture of the building when it was Thurlow's Hardware Store, which was between 1870 and 1920. And the windows are the same. So we've heard that they could be an in-kind replacement of those windows that were put in during the building's rehabilitation in 1972, 1973, at the time of urban renewal. Tom Colterjohn, I did consult with him, Tom Colterjohn believes this is the, believes this is the case. Newbury Port's urban renewal is itself an important Newbury Port's urban renewal is itself an important part of the city's and the nation's history. So I argue these windows are historic, that this should be reviewed. The inventory should be submitted. The evidence that they're not historic should be submitted. And as long as they are historic, they fall within all of the determinations that follow that decision, which are actually fairly extensive under the DOD. But I think you've discussed that already with the Historical Commission. The only reason I've heard for replacement is to allow for the windows to be opened and enliven the street. But the DOD regulations are clear that historic windows must be retained and repaired. And if you determine that they cannot be reasonably retained and repaired, then they need to be replaced in kind, both in design and materials, whenever reasonably feasible. The Historical Commission has advised that the only way in-kind design can be achieved is with metal windows. And the applicant has found these cost more than what he wants to spend. That's fine. I agree with Counselor Agarman. If he can't see his way to meeting the DOD in-kind design requirement, then, you know, he should withdraw. I don't understand what enliven the street means. This building already fronts on to the usually very lively bullnose. I'll also note that my husband and I don't, we're not patrons of all of the State Street restaurants, which have these bi-fold windows, but we do go to Port Tavern, but not when their windows are open. Because when the windows are open, flies enter the restaurant. And I've actually always wondered why this was not, or is not, considered a health issue. As a resident, I do not want this important building to be altered for the sake of the few months the windows could even be open. This building was already recently harmed for a restaurant which lasted less than a year. Market Square has been in the National Register since 1971. It is supposed to be protected by the DOD. But proposed replacements do not meet the DOD regulations. Please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
I see no hands raised at this time, Chair.
Okay, we will close public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do, just as a reminder, and I think the applicant may have raised his hand, concerned that he didn't have an opportunity to address the board, but he is here to presumably speak to the application and any of the concerns that were raised already.
And that's exactly what I was going to do right now. So we'll let, if we close public, we can close public comment and open it for discussion with the applicant, the planning board, and members of the Historical Commission. And I'll ask the applicant to speak at this moment.
He is unmuted. John, you are unmuted if you'd like to speak. John, we're unable to hear you, I think.
Well, we could continue our discussion, and he could join in when he figures out how to do that.
Yeah, perhaps that would make sense.
All right. So I'm going to open it for discussion among the planning board members, given the information you've prepared for tonight from your readings and review and from what you've heard tonight. I'd like to have comments from as many board members who would like to participate. Who would like to go first?
Chair, I would like to, if I could, Rick Tainer.
Sure.
So I thought, before coming into this meeting, that I understood everything. And I think the discussion about whether something is a storefront or a window has confused me. And so let me start by assuming that it's a window, because that's where I came into the meeting thinking about. If it's not a window, then presumably none of the standards under item E, windows, in the standards would apply, including the discussion about the width of mountains. But I think that we all have understood this to be windows. And just let me proceed on that basis. And what I noticed in the ordinance, reading it carefully, is that we have to make three determinations. We have to determine whether these windows are historic exterior architectural features. And looking at the definition of that in the ordinance, it seems that they are, because they are described in the historic survey form. So it seems that they are historic exterior architectural features. The second thing we have to do is we have to determine the overall condition of each window as to whether it's good, fair, or poor. And good meaning something that is intact, structurally sound, and performing its intended purpose. And I don't think we've heard anything saying that these are not in good condition. They seem to be structurally sound and intact, and they seem to be performing their purpose. So the third thing is determining the appropriate treatment. And as I read it, and maybe those involved in drafting it could help me with this, as I read it, we almost have no discretion at all, because if we determine that it's historic, and if we determine it's in good condition, the ordinance says a good window shall be preserved. I've been working, up until now, I've been working on the assumption that we have the ability to allow the windows to be replaced with something different. But at this point, I don't see that, unless, and I don't see any flexibility given to us by the ordinance. It seems pretty rigid. So that's just kind of a question. I really don't understand what our ability is to approve this, even if we would like to. And I'll just leave it at that for now.
Andy, could I bring in Counselor Agarman on this one to help Rick and the rest of us through this, as he was involved with the creation of this and the thoughts behind it?
Yes, as the primary author of the ordinance, I think he'd be probably the best person to speak to that. Counselor Agarman, are you able to address the board?
Yes, I think the, going to the language, there's two concepts for an historic window, though. One is the historic form. And I know we talked about this ad nauseam last year when we amended it. And the other is actual historic material. So you had testimony from Stephanie Nikotic, that her belief that the windows themselves may be historic material. I don't think that Chair Richards has that view. It is true that when we rewrote this last year, we had intended there to be an inventory to sort of settle once and for all whether the board thinks that it's historic material. So that would be the first step. I think, though, it's probably, we can cut to the chase, because Stephanie Nikotic was saying that they probably were put in in '72 or '73. That's just short of the historic period, usually under the Secretary of Interior standards, which is 50 years, is my understanding. So it will be in a couple of years, independently historic, that's true. But I think you do have wiggle room here, that these are not historic materials. But you still have the language in the DOD under windows. When it talks about replacement windows, it says, "Replacements shall match the historic windows in dimensions, configuration, mode of operation, and other general characteristics, but materials need not be duplicated exactly." So the intent, and I believe the language says that, is to give you some flexibility. The mode of operation, as I conceded during my remarks, we're giving a little leeway here, and I think that's up to the board, especially if the Historical Commission is okay with it. But those are the confines, as I understand it. Because it's not historic material, the replacement has to match dimensions, configuration, mode of operation, other general characteristics, but materials need not be duplicated. And I'll try to find for Rick Tainer exactly where that is. It's under the windows section, so that's five. It's Roman numeral 27 F Frank, then Arabic number five, then small letter E is an Edward, and then Roman at three. I hope that's helpful.
Rick, do you want to respond?
I guess it's a question of intent that may not be set forth clearly, because it says that some things can be replaced, but it doesn't say that good windows can be replaced. It says good windows have to be preserved. So I suppose we could find that they're not in good condition, and that would allow us to allow a replacement.
Well, Rick, if I may suggest, I think that there might be a question here as to whether or not the windows are historic or just character-defining. You know, the two photographs that I had had up there, that I think were taken by Jennifer Blancher, zoning administrator, or Catherine Sullivan, they basically just show that, I think, the windows are not probably of a sufficient date to, you know, potentially argue it's historic, but certainly they're character-defining. And so it may not be a question of, you know, worrying about fitting into that box, but rather, I think I agree with every point that was made by Counselor Agarman, that you have the flexibility, I think, to, you know, to look at it as he suggested.
Yeah, I understand that. I just look at the definitions. And definition of a historic exterior architectural feature is any character-defining exterior architectural feature of a historic building or structure. It doesn't say that the feature has to be historic. It says that the building or structure has to be historic. And then you go to see what character-defining exterior architectural feature is, and it has to be understood to be contributing to the significance at the time of its listing on the National Register. And I think the National Register form looks to the windows and talks about them. So when I look at it, I look at it as a historic architectural feature, and because it's an exterior feature of a historic building. But maybe that wasn't, maybe the definition isn't as exact as the intent was meant to be.
If I may, Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, no, Board Member Tainer is reading it correctly. I mean, the character-defining feature is essentially the design elements, not the materials. That's the way, it sounds like others have worked in Boston, too. And that's the way the Boston Landmarks Commission looks at it. So, you know, even if the material is not historic, the pattern is historic. So really, that picture from the early, early 20th century, that shows the old hardware store, I guess it was. Yeah, I mean, that essentially is also shown on the inventory form, that pattern. But I dare say those pieces of glass and the actual wood separations are not there anymore. But it is a character-defining feature that it had those dimensions and proportions. I hope that, you follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just to clarify that, I had a comment from Caitlin earlier today, and she said specifically that the windows are not the, quote, "original" windows, in that they are now double-pane insulated windows. But to the point of them being a contributing feature, they have the same pattern. Rick, are you done yet?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
For now.
Yes.
Okay. Next board member who'd like to comment.
I also wanted to just ask, John, are you able to address the board now? Not sure, Chair. He has his hand raised, but he's not responsive, I guess.
I'm happy to comment, then. I want to highlight one of the points that was made by Stephanie, that we do have, and I was involved with Dawn in helping put together some of these standards for the DOD, the windows in particular. And we were very careful to request a procedure that helped us evaluate when windows should or should not be replaced. And I think it's a really important point, and I think it's very, it's a little bit confused by the fact that it's being changed from an operable window to, from a non-operable to an operable window. And it's tempting to say, okay, well, this is an entirely different thing, therefore, we look at it differently. But when I think about it, the more I think about it, the more we, if they're going to replace the windows, they have to follow the procedure, which is do an inventory of the existing window and make a case that they need to be changed. And this is all based on the assumption that they are historic, or at least a historic character feature, which I think they are. That's my first point. And also, the second point is that I agree with, I think Rick was making the point, that we are sort of hamstrung by the DOD, even though I would love to see operable windows here. And I do understand what the meaning of animating the downtown area, Market Square. And I think it would be more animated if it had operable windows. But I really thought about this a lot, and I think actually, we are kind of hamstrung by the DOD. And I think we need to insist that they look more like what is existing. And I think there might be creative ways of doing that. I still would like to see the hinged awning approach explored a little bit more, whether it means eliminating the awnings and hinging from the top, if that's possible. I'm not sure that it is, but it might be. Or hinging a third of the way down from the top, with the awnings remaining. Maybe then you can still have narrower mullions, I'm not sure. But I feel like there are things, designed solutions, that could still be explored. I don't think it's been exhausted yet. I'm done.
Next person, please. No one else wants to speak on this?
I see only Stephanie Nikotic's hand raised. I'm not sure. That's just from the previous comment.
No, that's public comment. I'm talking about planning board members.
This is Don Walters. Just for the record, the reason I'm not saying anything else, I think everything has already been said, and in my opinion, it's fairly obvious what the path forward is. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Do you want to state your opinion directly?
State what you think is obvious, Don.
Window, if something's going to be changed, a window inventory needs to be performed. I also agree that per the DOD ordinance, and if we don't follow it, as Counselor, Chair Counselor said, Agarman said, then we might as well not even have a DOD.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to belabor it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you. Would anyone else on the planning board like to chime in at this point?
Bonnie, this is Tanya.
Sure.
I'm just going to start. I did not listen to the commentary from the last meeting, so I can't vote on this item. But I would, I'm struggling with sort of this idea that we would have the owner have to do an inventory on these windows, because they clearly are not historic windows. And I would argue that they're not a historic feature, whether they were placed in the '70s or after. We don't know that, but I don't know that we necessarily would have to preserve them. I would like to see, I think it's a great idea to have these windows open up to the street, and I wish we could come up with a solution that could work. It sounds like the Historical Commission provided some, which I think is great. And Leah had actually provided some as well, which is good, too. I think regardless of personal belief on sort of whether open windows are sanitary or not, they are from an urban planning standpoint. They do activate the street front, and I think that other buildings in downtown have utilized them. And I would say that, you know, they've been altered at various times as well, and I wouldn't see this building as any more significant. I also think this building has been, you can see that it's been altered. If you look at the historic photo versus the photo that we're looking at today, I mean, the upper windows have been altered, the storefront configuration has been altered. So it's clearly not historic, as it was. And I think that there's that piece of it, too. But on the flip side, I see where we have a DOD ordinance, and if they're going to have operable windows, I'd like to see them sort of, I guess, match what we're calling historic, which is really just what's there from the 70s. So so, you know, hopefully the applicant can come up with some compromise so that they can achieve their goal of having that active street front, but then also mimicking this historic window from the 70s that we're trying to restore.
Thank you. Any other board members want to speak at this time?
Can you guys hear me now by any chance?
Yes.
Oh, finally.
Is that you, John?
Yes, it is.
Wonderful. Just state your name and
John Santinello, from Zavara Ristorante.
Thank you.
Okay, my first, I have a lot to get out here, but first off, I gave yesterday, as requested, to Caitlin Sullivan the new plans. I don't even know why we're looking at these windows anymore. If we, two weeks ago at the last meeting, you guys, we left off, you said you wanted two different versions, which I produced, as well as new photos, which we're not looking, we're still looking at the old storefront with the white paint. Do you guys have those new plans? I gave it to her two days ago by email.
Yes.
We do?
You have two versions, exactly what you asked me for. That's what I produced. I had my architect make them up. And you said you wanted to see more glass. I gave you more gla, you know.
Andy, can you pull those up?
Because this is from two meetings ago.
Hang on. My apologies for any confusion. Caitlin and I are confirming right now to make sure there's no confusion over this, because we were going off of the most recent documents we saw posted, so.
Those ones are dated yesterday, I think.
Were they on the web? They must have been on the website if you saw them.
Yeah, they're on the website.
This would be two different versions.
I'm sorry, we weren't notified of that. Did you just happen to find them there when you were reviewing this, Rick?
Yes.
I didn't know there was anything new to review, so I didn't look.
There were two new. I also have photographs. You asked me that you wanted to see what it would look like superimposed. We did that also, and I sent those to Caitlin, too.
Yep.
I did all my homework. Whatever I was asked, that's what I sent. And I even asked, she asked me at the 12th hour today, what type, if they were double-pane, and I said, yes, they're insulated windows, they're not, they're obviously not the original, original windows.
Yeah, hang on. My apologies if there was anything that was lost in translation there. Caitlin, are you able to just, you happen to be able to clarify perhaps? I'm just pulling up what we have on the
You should have one version.
Yeah, these were our last, excuse me, these were last-minute plans. Okay. These were last-minute plans that were submitted yesterday, and we finally got them posted today. And they're up there, and the planning board has not had a chance to review these last-minute plans that were received.
Caitlin, did you send us that notification?
The notification? I don't think there's a notification because they were just posted and just received.
Right, so the planning board normally is told
But they are available to pull up if we want to refer to them.
All right, we'll look at them now, but just for future reference, if anything gets posted, especially at the last minute, the planning board needs to be notified directly, because some of us think that we have finished our review and don't go back to the website at the last minute unless we know to do that.
So here's one version. However, I prefer the next version personally, but then again, you know, to each their own, as they say. Also, there's a colored photo of both of them, I believe, that you can see what they look like, because last meeting, a few of the board members say, I can't get an idea unless I could see it in a photo, and it took us a lot of time, effort, and money to do this, but we did it. I, I'm at the end of my rope, guys. This is the last set of drawings I'm doing. I can't do anymore. I've, I spent a small fortune on doing this.
Can you explain?
So this is one version. On the larger windows, you have four separations. The other one, it's five separations. The first two to the left are always going to be three due to the size. The big, there's one window, obviously, that's bigger than the other two. So this is the, you see the larger window has four separations. Let me just refresh from two weeks ago. With Mr. Morgan, who suggested the metal frame windows like the ones that are there, we went, we looked into it, we asked three different companies. They were absorbing the price. It was just astronomical. There was no way in heaven we could afford them. They were nearing some over, but most of them around $100,000. It's, I mean, it's just ridiculous. So we couldn't do that. So then we left off, like, two weeks ago, okay, let's try it in wood. And you guys wanted, what would it look like open? Here's your picture of the open windows. They do not protrude out over the awnings. Someone also was worried about that, that they do not protrude further than the awning. That's basically what it would look like open. I know you're more concerned about the closing of the windows, but quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, it's not a hardware store. It's a restaurant. You know, back, way, way back when, you know, it was a hardware store. You know, it's, we're in 2020 now. This is, and I agree, the centerpiece of Newbury Port, and I do think it's important to have something that is inviting and nice, but I don't know what to do anymore, you know. This is the best we could do. This is the fifth or sixth set of different types of, each time I've come to a meeting, you've asked me for a different type of window with divisions. It started with multiple divisions, and we did less, now we're down to, last two weeks ago, you wanted just plain glass. So that's what I've brought you today. I don't know what else to tell you. At this point, you know, I'd leave the windows the way they are and forget of it, because it's, it's going to, any way you slice it or dice it, this is a costly endeavor for me, and I'm willing to do it, but, you know, I don't need these windows open that badly to go through all this. I'm losing my patience with the whole, you know.
Okay.
I said it last time, I'll say it again. I just want some kind of direction, because there's just too many interpretations of the, of the bylaws, the laws, you know, I don't know. Take over. It's all yours.
Okay, this is Chair Bonnie Sontag, and I, you just took the words out of my mouth, only you made a statement instead of a question, because I was going to ask you how important it is to you to have these open, because that seems to be causing the greatest heartburn for everybody in terms of having it still look like it's a contributing feature to the historic structure and to the square. If it opens, that sort of historic look goes away. If you can live with them being closed, then it's possible we could simply leave it the way it is, or maybe make some improvements that would even make it more historically pleasing to the eye. But I just wanted to clarify with you that it would be okay with you if we didn't make them opening windows. Is that true?
I went through all of this for months now to do it open, so I mean, you know, I've come to the end of the road. I, it would have been nice to have them open, I think. You know, we, we spent a tremendous amount of money renovating this restaurant, which wasn't that old, but we gave it a totally, absolutely new look from the inside. It looks absolutely different, and this was going to be our finishing touch on it, to give it some kind of ambiance from the outside as well as the inside. So, you know, I don't know anymore. I really, it's like, I'm not a quitter, and I don't like to give up on things, but you know, my cuisine is more important than my windows. I'm not going to lie to you. And I know we're going to do an unbelievable job here with that, but I, I really think it would have added to the community, not detract. And I consider the building, it is a beautiful old building. I love the building, but I really don't think that changing the front windows is going to make a difference to the historic value of this building. I just think, you know, what, I don't know. Last meeting, all I know is the tone of the meeting two weeks ago was absolutely different. I wish we could go back into the the minutes of the last meeting, and everyone seemed to be super, super positive on open windows and more glass and no divisions at all. Now, you know, I know the Historic Board got involved, so, you know, everyone's on their Ps and Qs tonight. So, you know, whatever you guys decide, I'm good with it. I give up.
So that leaves it up to the plan. Thank you very much. That leaves it up to the planning board to have a discussion and decide what we want to do. I'll take comments. For example, those people who supported an inventory of the windows and wanted to see if there was some way to open them, I think we have a different perspective now that we know that making them operable is not an option and keeping the historic look of it. So if I'm wrong on that, I'd like to hear somebody's other opinion.
Yeah, this is James. I, my view on it is the same as the last meeting, that the restaurant owner has done a lot of work on this. They're, I get the feeling that they're semi-maybe historic, and I'm more for having a restaurant with open windows versus trying to preserve windows that maybe were put in during the 70s.
Can I speak to that? Because I mean, I, I think it would be nicer to have open windows. I really, really do. I think visually, they're more interesting. I think I, I, I would love to see them be that way, but I really, I think we have to ask ourselves as a board, like, what does the DOD mean? I mean, when we wrote those regulations, and granted, it was this city council that wrote them and approved them, but you know, Dawn and I contributed to some of the language about the windows, and we did that for a reason. When the next project comes along, and it's going to be in a different location, and maybe with different windows, and maybe we don't like the idea of having open windows there quite as much as we do here, are we then being inconsistent?
This is Bonnie, and I think you've hit on a good point. The ordinance is there to keep us honest in the sense that it forces us to be consistent and to look at extenuating circumstances if they exist. And in this case, I don't know who we heard from, I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly. But this is not State Street. This is Market Square, and it reads, to use the architect's language, as West Row. It's several buildings connected, and then there are other buildings across In Street that carry on the same theme as well as East Row and whatever the other side of the street is called. So we're looking at something that is part of a whole, and I'm very reticent to make any kind of an exception and try to justify that from the point of view of it being leading to the possibility that we would have problems down the road, setting a precedent right now. So I'm leaning toward a more strict reading of the DOD and being guided by that. Others?
This is Rick. First of all, I really like sitting in restaurants with open windows. I like sitting at the port tavern. I think it's great. And at the last meeting, I was very open to finding a solution that would do that. And I thought that maybe instead of having something on hinges, there could be something on sliders, the windows would slide open instead of fold open. And that we might be able to get the narrower mountains that way. But I guess my basic problem now, now that I've been pointed to the new DOD regulations and the very, very specific regulations regarding windows, I don't see how I can get what I would like to get. Because I think that in order to do that, we would almost have to ignore that whole detailed analysis in the long paragraph under windows, and then the statement that a good window has to be preserved. So I think that, I mean, I haven't seen a way yet to do what I would like to do, which is to allow it somehow. I think that it really is, I think we're really constrained by the ordinance. And I have to say that I didn't understand that two weeks ago.
Thank you for the clarification. Would anyone else like to speak?
Just real, just real quickly, this is MJ. It's not that imperative that I give my opinion, but I pretty much agree with what Rick said, and I feel strongly that enlivened street fronts really do make a city more livable and more enjoyable, and it's a shame that we're tied to this with the DOD. But I do feel like we're tied to not being able to pass it.
This is Anne. I would agree with that.
Can I make my closing statement now?
Let's just make sure that all the planning board members who want to speak have spoken first. Would anyone else like to?
Yeah. Sorry, this is MJ again. I just want to add one more thought, which is over 10 years ago when I moved here, there were no outdoor seating in, from restaurants that, other than what was Nachbar Average Joe's that I, that I recall. And since then, there was an effort made. I know it started with the Reggino and went over to Sayah and Loretta and all the other restaurants that it really made a huge difference to me in our level of livable city in the summer, and I think it's made, it's made the city so much better. This is a circumstance that I feel would do the same. And I just feel it's a shame to, to not consider it more seriously. But I understand also the historical significance of keeping things the same, so my last comment.
Yeah, and this is Beth. I'll just say, I mean, I agree. I would love to see operable opening windows, but I do care what the Historic Commission has said and looking at the DOD. I mean, if the applicant is not willing to go with what the Historic Commission indicated with the metal-framed windows that, you know, could be operable, then I think otherwise we're, and if there's no other more cost-effective alternative that would preserve the historical look, then I don't know. I would be inclined, I guess, to vote against what's been proposed, as unfortunate as I think it is.
Thank you. I don't know if there's anyone else left who hasn't spoken recently. I'll just put it out there in the planning board. Okay, John, you wanted to make a closing statement. You're on. You're on.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to mention for the future for other applicants. I think, you know, this DOD thing, it should have been brought up more strongly months and months ago, instead of making me run through hoops. I really, you know, I spent a lot of time, energy and money on this. And like I said, you know, we would have spent a small fortune to change these windows to make them operable. They're going to stay the way they are now. That's it. I'm done. But, you know, we have, we have seating already in the back, so I'm not worried about it. It's not for seating on the street, obviously. It was just, again, to give an atmosphere that I think would have been really great for Market Square, but you know, that's obviously not going to happen. But I just wish you guys would have told me this, you know, uh, three or four plans ago. Not even to go through all these different versions that I made, you know? It looks great the way it is. Just painted black, I think, you know? It's great, I can live with it. No flies coming in, like you said, the woman said before. I'll save on air conditioning, no problem. And I'll save on money too. But I was willing to spend that money to make it look even nicer, but I'm fine with it. I'm good. It's all good. The food will still be fantastic, whether the windows are open or closed. So with that, that's it, Johnny out.
Okay, thank you. And also thank you, John, for um, what I wrote as a note, a more early warning system about how strict the DOD requirements are. Um, and that that message get uh, presented to applicants as early as possible. Okay, thank you.
Before they spend almost $6,000.
Yeah. I mean, it would, you'd still have to make an, if you chose to make an application, there still would be a process of going through the Historical Commission.
Right, of course.
Planning Board, but it would be two nights and it would be done.
Yep.
Yep, got it. Okay, so um, I think we're
Also, one last thing. I, I really wish everyone would read the minutes of the last meeting two weeks ago. Because the way you guys left off was it was going to be either an A or a B choice, but this, it would be decided, you know? But we were lucky to even get the, the, the plans off. It was almost like they were left off in, you know, whatever. I, I appreciate your time and um, no hard feelings and it's, it's all good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I will entertain a motion at this point. May I have a board member make a motion, please? Would you like me to say yes? Do you want me to say clearly what it should be? Yeah?
No, I was, I was just going to make a suggestion that um,
Excuse me, who is this? Who is this?
This is Tanya.
Thank you.
Um, does the applicant want to withdraw? And are they allowed to withdraw?
What, what are my options?
Uh, well, this is
I'm going to ask that question to Andy. I, I just didn't know, I mean, if
It, it's a good question and I think the applicant, if, if, if the applicant's getting a no from the board and wants to just proceed along with maintaining the windows essentially as they are, I would suggest just allowing yourself to withdraw the application and ask for the board to allow you to withdraw it without prejudice. Um, that way essentially the board is not issuing a written decision, you know, denying the project and you can come back at some other point if you decide to revisit the matter in some way.
Fine, I withdraw.
Yeah, that Okay, yeah, I was going to say that just allows you, if you want to come back, John, at another time with, with another proposal, um, it just doesn't Okay, I'm just, I, 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 I can see where you're coming from, John. I, I, I agree with you.
Once was enough. That's it? You get your windows.
I'm sorry, this is your introduction to, to the town, but um, I'm sure your theory is wonderful.
Am I allowed to, to put corking every once in a while? Because one of them is leaking. That I'm allowed to do, correct? I don't need an application for that, I hope.
If you do anything that, I'm sorry to take this so seriously. If you do anything that shows from the exterior, yes, you need to at least to go see Andy about it or Jennifer.
Right, one of them has
Make sure it stays on the inside.
Yeah, it's on the inside.
Fine, you're good. So this is, this is officially with, this application is officially withdrawn. Andy, do we have to make any kind of um, notation or comment from the planning board on this?
Yeah, I, just as typical, I would recommend that the board take the roll call vote as usual uh, and just agree to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Before that, uh, do we need to have a written, anything written from the applicant? Or is it just a verbal request sufficient?
Yeah, I think the verbal request on the record here, the recording of the meeting will capture that sufficiently.
Bonnie, if you're looking for a motion to um, accept the withdrawal without prejudice, so moved.
Thank you, Don.
Second, Rick.
Okay, I have to take a roll call. And I'll begin with James.
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Um, I would call on Tanya, but she's not eligible. Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Okay, withdrawn without prejudice. We are done on this one. We will move on to our second uh, public hearing for the evening. Is the Daily Group representing eight, 10, 12 and 18 Colby Farm Lane. This is the definitive subdivision. Site plan review, 6C special permit and OSRD special permit um, application. We have some updates from the last meeting, so I will call on the applicant's representative to get us started, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Mead, Mead Talaman Costa, 30 Green Street in New York. With me this evening is Matt Hammer of Landplex Engineering, the engineer on the project. Howard Snyder, the landscape architect on the project. And David Daly and Jonathan Miller of the Daily Group. And Andy, is that the, the most recent, I think it is, is that the most recent landscaping plan?
Yes, that's one from today and I have the other drawing as well.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, members of the board, um, when last we were here, there were a couple of items that needed to be addressed. And um, we need to go back to the Conservation Commission as well, which we did last night. And uh, the Conservation Commission closed out uh, the matter last night and will be issuing a um, order of conditions. To go over the plans that we changed, Lot One was changed. I might add that we did submit all of these changes except for what you have in front of you and I'll tell you what that is momentarily, uh, last week. So you all should have that along with a cover letter, um, explaining the changes. So Lot One was definitively changed and this lot configuration was approved by the Conservation Commission. Uh, the plan you see before you this evening includes um, some changes in the landscaping on Lot One from what you received a week ago today. Namely, uh, the, the um, Conservation Commission wanted to have uh, some vegetation that would encourage wildlife and discourage people from going into the wetlands in addition to the um, split rail fence that will go along the, the lot lines along the, the wetlands areas. And so Howard worked very hard today to incorporate those um, plantings and I'll turn it over to him in a minute, um, to, uh, to address the concerns of the Conservation Commission. So in addition to that, um, the, uh, the board wanted to change the fencing around the playground. Andy, if you could just, just move it over a little bit. And there was a whole discussion about the fencing around the entire common area versus the playground itself. And so we removed the fencing to the rear of the common area and, thank you. Uh, and then replaced it with shrubs uh, along the sidewalk. I think it was Mr. Tainter that requested that, that, or suggested that, in fact, that might be a good idea. So you can see on this plan, um, that that has occurred. In addition to that, um, we had given you the proposed conditions for Lot One and the condominium documents acknowledging uh, the use of the, of the municipal facilities at the end of Colby Farm Lane, similar to the project across the street. And also the board wanted a condition relative to parking by the residents. Thank you, Andy, in the um, in the public parking spaces. Uh, one of the things we were sent away with as well was to finalize the public playground plan with Lee Street. Uh, and we thought we were moving in that direction. And then last Friday, uh, there was an issue that came up that in fact, maybe the city didn't actually want a playground there. Molly Attenborough had raised some concerns about truck traffic on Colby Farm Lane. In the interim time between last Friday and today and actually yesterday, um, I've spoken uh, with the mayor and I think the mayor has um, has provided her input to Andy and, and others as well as Molly, uh, relative to the playground and the safety of Colby Farm Lane. And so what the developer has agreed to do in a sketch plan that we provided today is two things. One, the board talked about uh, the painting of Crosswalk and where that location was. Notice signs, yield to pedestrians, as well as painting on pavement, a yield. Uh, but in addition, the, the mayor requested that we install two light pole solar powered crosswalk activation signs, similar to what's going to be installed on High Street. Uh, I think the one, the two I could give you as examples would be the one at the Shamet, the old Shamet Gold Building on Merrimack Street, um, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with. And uh, the one on Low Street at Children's Healthcare, just beyond Story Ave interchange. In addition, the mayor requested we reduce the number of public parking spaces to provide handicap accessible and another extra parking space, but maybe not an entire five parking spaces. The developer has, um, you know, we've worked with the playground proposal here from the very beginning. And everybody has been enthusiastic about it, um, including our initial meetings with Lee Street. In addition, the people across the street that are buying the houses and the people who live on Colby Farm Lane, not the least of which is the family at the corner of Colby Farm Lane, Low Street, are all very excited about having a facility near them for kids. And so uh, the mayor too has expressed her enthusiasm for it. And so we are um, proposing to continue to have that playground there. And we believe that we have addressed the, the public safety concerns. Relative to that, um, I think that uh, the mayor and the DPW think that we have done that as well. And if you go back for a moment, um, you'll see that the road actually narrows um, right at the area where the crosswalk is naturally. And then you have the parking on either side. Um, and of course, the new developments on either side. So that will all contribute to traffic calming. We got a sign off from Phil. Also, there were two items that were left for Phil from Phil's letter. One was a thrust block and I'll let Matt talk about that, uh, which he's going to be changing the detail on. And the other was resolving the issues regarding the swales along Colby Farm Lane that the chair had raised um, at the last meeting, not wanting to, to kind of leave that open. Uh, in order to address the swales, um, and in fact, Matt, when he talks, can talk about his conversation with John Eric, um, we need to come to an agreement with the DPW on the road. The road improvement plan, uh, which we don't have right now because folks in the city are busy taking care of other things. But we would request that the board do one of two things. One, uh, maybe we'll get it done in the next two weeks. Um, I don't know, that depends on the availability of the city. Because we will be reclaiming the road and reconstructing it. Or two, um, if we don't have a final plan in the next two weeks, that the board um, include a condition that says that prior to, you know, the actual construction or the, you know, issuance of the, you know, eighth certificate of occupancy or some deadline, that we come back in and have the board approve that uh, reclamation and rebuilding plan uh, that we've come to an agreement with on, with the DPW. So that's where we are. Um, we think that we've addressed all the concerns of the board. And um, I, I would like, maybe Howard, if you could go over the details of what you changed on the landscaping plan and then maybe Matt, you can talk about the, the um, remaining issues that you talked to Phil and John Eric about. So Howard?
Yes, uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, so in, the, the changes were, were relatively minor, but, but certainly have uh, an important adjustment and impact to the overall planting design and, and uh, of the, the project. And Lot One, uh, what was done was we have introduced a species appropriate plant material that is plant material that um, is, is native to New England and adaptive to uh, the conditions of being uh, within 25 feet of a wetland. Uh, and done so along the fence on both sides to not only create a physical barrier, but certainly a visual um, delineation of, of the, the limits of that uh, Lot One. Uh, it will provide some habitat uh, and go along with the species that are commonly found in that type of wetland area. And under the guidance of the Conservation Commission, the, the hatch pattern you see right now, uh, to the right of the word detail, uh, more to the upper right section of the image, is a specialized seed mix that is low maintenance and uh, requires mowing maybe twice a year at the most. And uh, that used to be between the 25 foot no disturb area in the limits of the property. And Conservation Commission thought it's going to get mowed, so they accepted the uh, change of the specialty seed mix over to lawn. In return, uh, the request was made and we, I believe, fulfilled that with creating this planting on both sides of this uh, split rail fence. It, it provides again, a better visual and physical delineation uh, as well as provides a more usable side and backyard space for the, the occupants of that single family dwelling. If we could zoom out and then go over to um, the open space area of Lot Two. I recall from uh, the last meeting with the board, a request was made to create a row of plantings to, to separate the lawn area from the asphalt walkway to, to really um, visually and physically, more important physically, keep pedestrians on the walkway uh, and to stop from uh, what's come, often referred to as a cow path, but paths being worn into the lawns to the point where the grass is uh, dyed back and compacted soil. So what was done was, was I added in a row of um, a softer, uh, they're, a species of rose, but they are without thorns. And they grow about three feet in height and they grow thick. So that, it will be of um, something that, that blooms for most of the summer. So there will be a visual uh, beautification that occurs as well as the physical separation. And what I've done at the corners, um, up in, in the right where the walkway makes a, a 90 degree turn. And then uh, down in that uh, corner between the walkway and what is now being considered the alignment of the playground fence, I have put in uh, I have put in a cluster of evergreen conifer shrubs. So there is a year-round, more defined, thicker obstacle. So people are will be even more deterred from cutting those corners. And that, in in brief, is the substance of the changes that occurred.
Thank you, Howard. Matt, could you talk about wrapping up Phil's comments and your conversation with John Eric?
Yeah, sure. Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering and Surveying Lowell Mass. So this essentially two comments from Phil Christiansen. One is, is that that there needed to be some additional clarification on the use of thrust blocks, which are used at the the changes in direction for the water line. The plans do show thrust block details within the plan set. And Phil recommended that we provide some additional notations on the utility plan to incorporate the thrust blocks that the bends in the in the water line, which we can most certainly do. And then secondly, as Attorney Mead outlined, the swell comment related to Colby Farm Lane, of which would be incorporated with the continued discussions with the town engineer in the town related to the improvements within Colby Farm Lane. And that swell comment would be incorporated in that in the street improvement plan, which would would be reviewed by the city engineer.
Thank you, Matt. One of the thing, Madam Chair, before I turn it over to you, I I would add that actually, the city has been doing a lot of searching and research on Colby Farm Lane. And one of the issues has been they have no layout documents for it. And so Matt and his team had to go back out and do some survey work to help provide further information on the actual layout of Colby Farm Lane. So that's that's been ongoing for a number of weeks.
And that's been completed on our end.
Good, thank you. This isn't all you're going to speak about, right?
Those were the only outstanding issues from the last meeting, Madam Chair.
Correct. You don't have any new information?
I don't. Do you think I'm supposed to have new information?
We saw a chart of city benefits agreed in exchange for keeping the playground there. This gives us a full picture of what was resolved this week.
So sure. Thank you very much. I apologize. I didn't realize that that was sent to you because that is an issue for the mayor and the DPW and Water and Sewer. So the, as we discussed at the last meeting, the applicant has met with the city and at the request agreed to re reclaim and resurface Colby Farm Lane from Low Street down beyond this development. I want to say 600 and somewhat feet. I don't have that right in front of me. So they are doing that. The city has asked them also not just to connect their sewer main to the existing main, but replace the clay sewer pipe that runs off of Low Street to Colby Farm Lane in addition to the services, the existing services. The applicant has agreed to do that. And then the applicant has some work on the water mains to undertake. And then the applicant will be constructing a public access publicly accessible playground at this location. So those are in addition, of course, to the affordable units in the open space, which are required under the Inclusionary Housing, OSRD and 6C. So those would be all additional benefits. Those exact numbers and how they're finally worked out are actually would be within the purview of the the mayor's office. And in addition, the applicant's going to be building or contributing a certain amount of money up to building a new barn for the Park and Rec Department.
Thank you. I was not implying that we needed to go through the numbers, but just it looked like there were more benefits in this to this plan, to this application. And I wanted you to be able to to state them. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me.
Okay. So before we get into the details of all of the potential conditions and findings and so forth, let's slip something that we've needed to do for a couple of meetings now. When we did the completeness vote on this, these applications, we did not vote on the requested waivers at that for that sort of for the application in general. So I'd like to get that out of the way right now. It's administrative piece, but we need to vote those waivers, which are to grant the requested waiver of submittal requirements for the major site plan review. It's just simple, straightforward that will cover submitting not, they don't want to submit a traffic report nor a full environmental and community impact analysis. And I think as an administrative piece, I could take a motion to grant those to that waiver. Could I have a member make that motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Bonnie. I make Leah, this is Leah. I make a motion to grant the waivers.
Thank you. And may I have a second?
I'll second, Don.
Don, okay. And now I'll just do the roll call on that. James?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya abstains, I understand.
I do.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ? Yes. Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, administratively, that's out of the way. Any questions you have on what you've heard tonight?
I have several questions on the plans.
Go for it.
On the on the plan that's before us right now, for lot one, there is a annotation that says split rail fence delineates lot one property line within 25-foot wetland setback area. Does that mean that the fence stops when you cross out of the wetland setback area? So only goes about halfway down the lot line?
No, the the split rail fence will go from the those two sides. So the back, the rear of the lot, and then the left side lot.
So maybe that note should be changed to say that because right now it's ambiguous.
Okay.
Could we go to the the layout and lighting plan?
Yep, there with me. Just one second. I'll switch over to that.
So while we're switching over, my first question about that is in the parking area, there are handicap ramps on both sides of the parking area. But on the right-hand side, I don't think there's a sidewalk. It's not evident in the plan. So if there isn't a sidewalk there, there shouldn't be a handicap ramp.
On the right hand, Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering, on the right hand side, there will be a sidewalk.
Oh, there will. Okay, I didn't see that in the plan. I missed that. Is it shown on the plan?
It's shown on the plan, but there there could be some additional clarification needed to make that clear.
So would that be, that will be a concrete sidewalk, correct? Not a batuminus? That's what the city ordinance is.
Yeah, so 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 within the city right-of-way, that would be a concrete.
Okay, so it would be helpful to have a detail for the sidewalk for that. I assume that applies to both the sidewalk on the north side and the sidewalk on the south side, correct?
Yes.
Andy, has that come up or is my screen frozen?
No, no, the it's just taken a second. For some reason, the PDF wasn't loading quickly. So I was just panning around for the part we need. Hang on one second.
Matt Hammer, Lamplex, on sheet 10, there are handicap ramp details.
Actually, I meant the sidewalk detail.
There is sidewalk on the detail.
I saw batuminus detail. Actually, I must have missed the the concrete detail.
So we can add some additional verbiage to that if needed, and or you could add that as a condition to that all sidewalk work will meet the City of Newbury Port's requirements for sidewalks.
So you don't actually have a detail?
Well, we have a detail for the ramp, a walk, the curb, you know, the curb detail. I don't have a a specific detail from the the sidewalk details for the City of Newbury Port.
I don't know how to how you want to handle this, but there should be something on the plan that says what you're building. And, you know, that that what you're looking at right here doesn't doesn't do that. And we've had, we've had issues with the two minutes going in where it was supposed to be concrete. I just want to make sure that's absolutely clear on the plans.
Okay.
So going back to the
Excuse me, on the, I'm sorry, Matt Hammer, Lamplex, on that, the ramp details, it does call out concrete.
Yep.
You'll see it. Yep. And then you'll see
That's the level entrance to the ramp. It doesn't say, it doesn't say concrete for the sidewalk. That's that's the the bottom of the ramp. I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't really care how you do it. I just think that it's important because we've had problems in the city to make sure that was clear on the plans.
And understood.
Change the word, you change the word sidewalk to concrete sidewalk or or something like that, just so it's clear.
Sure.
The, so there isn't, there actually is a sidewalk on the right side of the plan of the parking area?
Yes, there is.
So could you show that to me?
It's the five-foot sidewalk that's shown that connects to the sidewalk that runs along the lot line.
Okay, so you're, that's a ramp. Okay, so so in the public right-of-way, it will be concrete and it'll transition to batuminus. When it crosses the lot line. Okay, I got you. The crosswalks, I think there should be a detail for the crosswalks and you can use the city detail. I think it needs to make, you need to make sure that that both crosswalks conform and the sidewalks conform to the the requirements for width. Unless you're looking, unless there's some reason not to do that. And and the, so there should be details for the crosswalks and and for the pedestrian crossing rights. And you know, I'd recommend, although this is up to DPS, but I'd recommend using the international crosswalk rather than the latter crosswalk because the international is is much more visible. And if we're having concern about people, you know, trucks coming down here or fast traffic, it'd be best to have the most visible format.
Yeah, absolutely. And Matt Hammer, Lamplex, all of that work within the right-of-way would also be incorporated in a separate plan and detail for that street improvement plan that Attorney Mead had mentioned that would need to go through the city's review.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Any other planning board member comments at this time?
To the chair, this is Andy. Rick, you had asked for the lighting sheet. I wasn't sure if there's anything in particular you wanted to note on this sheet with it up.
Well, no, this, this is, it's called the landscaping or layout and lighting sheets. That's why it's just, I just needed it to refer to the crosswalks and the parking spaces and the handicap.
Okay, I do. I just wanted to make sure you covered everything. All right, thank you.
I have a question. This is Bonnie Sontag. The public parking has been reduced to three spaces, one of which is handicapped. So effectively, there are only two public parking spaces. What is the thinking behind that? I would have thought there's enough space for it that you would want to have more public, we would all want to have more public parking there.
So Lisa Mead, Mead Tellarmacosta, Madam Chair, it's it's kind of the, I think it's it's kind of the balance to try to address how public is it with some of Molly's concerns with the some of the mayor's comments. So we're happy to have the five spaces. The mayor, I don't want to speak for her, but in our conversation, you know, she thought, well, maybe if you reduce some of the public's parking spaces, it won't, you know, it won't encourage as many people to go down there that aren't from that neighborhood or from that street. So, you know, we can do five because that's what fits on the plan. We can also do three, and that's what's shown here.
Personally, I don't, if it's either public or it's private. And if it's public, it looks token to put two spaces there. I think we should go with the five, but I'd like to hear from other board members.
Bonnie, also, I just wanted to note that Molly Umbro is here in the audience. I don't know if anybody else in the public wanted to speak on this application, but I know she's here as well in case there are any questions related to her earlier thoughts or comments.
I have made a note that we do need to do public comment and should have done it earlier, but we're into this now. So I'm sure she'll comment at that time. Let's continue with the planning board comments because I'd like a response on
I agree with you. I think it's silly to reduce the number of spaces because people are going to show up. The number of people that are going to show up are going to show up and it'd be nice if they don't park on the street illegally.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I I agree. And I I think that one of the things that need, this is Rick, I'm sorry, one of the things that needs to be addressed if it hasn't been is when this plan is redrawn to show however many spaces there are, there should be, right now, it looks kind of odd to have that blank space between the end of the fence and the parking area. So the fence, if if there's going to be wherever the parking spaces end up, they should be appropriately enclosed by this that fence, if you know what I mean.
Right. Madam Chair, this is Lisa Mead. We're happy to do however it is that you want to do it. Obviously, we just showed this so we would have an example for tonight.
Okay, so I think unless there are other, there's another comment on this from another board member, it sounds like we're, we'd like to go back to five and to delineate it very carefully so that there's no illegal parking. And okay. Yes.
Bonnie, this is Tanya. Could you put a bike rack there?
There, there is a bike, Tanya, you weren't, I don't think you were the last
I wasn't, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're sorry, we're sorry too. There is a, there is a bike rack that's proposed and it's in the more detailed landscape plan. It's the kind that's taken off of the ones up at the Kelly School.
And so it's right by the playground here in these parking spots?
Yes, well, not in the parking spots, obviously, but it's
Well, that would be weird.
Yes, it's adjacent.
Thank you.
Okay. Shall we hold off on on more questions or fine tuning of this until we have public comment? I should have taken it earlier and I let it slip. So I'll make that decision and say we're open for public comment at this time. Anyone who'd like to speak, please give your name and your address. And if you have any position that you need us to know about that as well, and that, no comment.
So we have Molly Umbo raised her hand in the audience.
Yes, this is Molly Ettenborough, Sustainability Manager for the City of Newburyport. So yeah, I think in our one of our tech review meetings, I believe it was May 13th, we did bring up some concerns about the playground. And that was more around maintenance and who owns the playground, if it's private, if it's public, and then how it would be maintained in the long term. So that sort of started the conversation. And then internally in the city, we started talking about the needs of this. There are 26 parks and playgrounds in the city of Newburyport already. And we wonder if there is really a need for this, especially given the high traffic on this road. I don't know if many of you travel there often, but I do. On a daily basis, we can have, you know, up to 100 cars and trucks on that on that road. And that's five to six days a week. Some of the vehicles are 12 to 15 tons. So stopping quickly or sightlines can be really difficult. So I really have been concerned about having a playground or having kids running across the street from one development to the other. You know, I feel like that that's a danger. So I'm glad to hear that there's talk about a crosswalk. I would echo Rick Tinter's thoughts on making sure that that crosswalk, if that is what it's decided, is very visible, whether there's lighting there or how wide it is. Also, that road has a number of issues, and I think that you're addressing some of them where it's narrow, where it floods. So making sure that the roadway throughout that area where there are people crossing the street is wide enough and that there are sidewalks that can take people off of the road. You know, and just long term, I think, you know, is it something that we really need? Is it something that the city really wants to maintain over the long time? Or is this going to be private forever? Or is this development going to come to the city later on and ask us to take it over and, you know, fix it and repair it as need be? I know what will happen. We're going to get complaints about it in the future, and then we'll have to deal with it. So I just want to make sure that all of those concerns are covered with the planning here. And yeah, I would agree with the parking. If you're going to have parking, it's better to have more parking because we want to get them off. It'll be farming. The traffic can get really bad there.
There any other public comment? Andy, do you see any hands raised?
Nope, no others at this time.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back in. Attorney Mead, could you reiterate the plans for maintaining, I mean, the responsibility for maintaining the playground?
Absolutely. So as we've discussed in the past, the playground will be a public playground via an easement. The fee will be owned by the homeowners association and the homeowners association will be required to maintain the playground. One of the things that we're required to do, and that's actually for insurance purposes, is to have it certified when it's installed. So that will be all of that will be taken care of, but that will be maintained by the homeowners association. You can have it as a condition in your decision because it's going to be in the docs, the homeowners docs or the condominium association documents. But that the access to it will be via an easement for that entire area to the city. Similar to the easements that will be granted and are required as part of the Evergreen project. And also, I would point out the ones down at the toll where the walkways run over the private property, those are all done via an easement to the city of Newburyport for public access.
Speaking of public access where we don't want it, this comes out of the discussion from in your presentation last time. Is is any consideration given? And I'd like to know if other board members think this is necessary because I know we're trying not to over sign this area. Is it possible that people might try to walk through the wetlands on the far side of lot one? And do we need to do anything to deter them?
I think, you know, Howard or Matt may be able to help me with my memory on this. So there was a bit of a discussion about that with the Conservation Commission. And they decided not to do anything down there. I think it was in our first meeting with the Conservation Commission. So I don't that we did have a discussion about it, but they dropped it as not having it be a concern. And that is my memory right on that, Matt? And Andy, you were present, too. So you might recall.
That's my recollection as well. Yes, that's my recollection as well.
We also got rid of the sidewalk, Lisa, too, per Julia's request.
Right, there was there had been a sidewalk that runs up into the development and then down alongside, and she asked for that to go so it didn't encourage people to go into that area.
Yep.
Do we need and maybe this is a question for Andy to include in the special conditions about that open space not being accessible to anybody?
Well, I think what? Yeah, I think it's fine to note that. I think the more important piece that we'd want to capture here is just that, as Lisa had noted, the applicant's agreeing to privately own and maintain the playground space, but to provide the city a public access easement if so desired.
I think I think she's talking about the open space, which is going to be, I believe that the city would like that conveyed to them.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry, my misunderstanding. Yeah. So, yeah, we'd had discussions about that previously, and we've had a preference that we've expressed to the development team similar to in the development across the street that the open space be conveyed and fee to the city. So, you know, again, it provides a better level of protection. So that was the assumption here. I think the developer has been in agreement with that. And I think that's the cleanest way to deal with that. It also makes it a little bit easier when, for instance, if there was some sort of encroachment from lot one into that open space area, if the city is the fee interest owner, it's also a little easier to make it clear who's controlling what's going on there. So.
Okay, so that'll take care of the open space and preserving it. We don't need anything else in the special conditions.
Correct.
David Daly, the developer, can I just wait? Just to reconfirm something from last week that just outside that playground area, the open space there is that's strictly for the HOA use.
Yeah, we're talking about the lot three open space, I believe.
Though I know, but I once we're in that discussion phase, I just want to make sure that we again, we had confirmed that last week, but I just want to reconfirm that's clearly spelled out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's this area right here that we're talking about for open space.
Yep.
All right. My plan is to go. Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Were you going to close the public comment? Or if you did, I apologize.
I thought I already did.
I missed it. I open for the planning board comment?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Thank you. I have one question, perhaps. It's to Andy, but I saw your email yesterday, Andy, the 19th, and I'm a bit confused. And I did hear Molly's comments about, you know, maybe we have too many parks, etc. And I think your email succinctly puts it that there was, I think, a question thrown out in both Molly and Lisa. Read Ron there. And I heard Molly's position. Do we have a position as a result of your May 19th email regarding the need for this this park here by Lisa Reed?
Yeah, I can't speak for her for her department, but I know that there's a strong need for an accessible playground. And my understanding is the developers agreed here with the equipment based on the discussion in the meetings we had to provide equipment that is accessible. So I know that that's fulfilling at least a priority need of the Parks Department and Parks Commission. I'd have to defer to Lisa Reed or the Parks Commission on other facilities in the city and where those the priority is for that accessible park or space. But I know that Lisa was happy to see that the developer was proposing an accessible playground here.
Thank you. Just just one one more clarification on that, please. Would you help me understand when we say ADA accessible playground accessible player? Is it the entire playground will be ADA accessible or will one or two elements of the playground be ADA accessible?
Well, again, I'd have to defer to Lisa Reed on the details of that. But my understanding is every feature, every element that's installed in that playground would be accessible, including obviously the space around the equipment for, you know, spatial and so forth. But she's the expert in the details of that one. Lisa may know as well from the discussions how detailed we got in that.
Great.
Thank you. Nothing else, Bonnie.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from planning board members? If not, oh, yeah, go ahead.
About the playground. I guess it's important to note that we have seven dwelling units here with no space for their own recreation. So I think we need to look at this playground, not just as for I think there needs to be a play area here regardless of whether it's open to the public or not, because they don't have traditional backyards to put stuff in. And I believe I may be wrong on this. I believe that the affordable unit may have a accessible ground floor. I may be wrong in that.
No, that's correct. So there's a
That's another reason to have accessible play equipment here. I think that this really does a lot instead of the model, instead of being everybody with their own backyard, here we have everybody with a big lawn and a combined playground. And I think that that really works well. And it's a model we haven't seen. We don't have in Newburyport, to my knowledge, just like this. So I think it's a really good addition to the community.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Okay. Andy, a point of of procedure, my plan was to go through each of the special, the permits, the applications and go through in summary form, the findings and make sure we have all the conditions that we want to include. But before we do that, does that assume that we're taking a vote? Do we have to take a vote tonight? Because we still don't have, we have a lot of new plans. We have a lot of inconsistency. And I think if I can speak for the planning board, we like to have everything tied up and clean before we actually take a vote. So should we go through all of this now to make sure we have everything in order?
Yeah, I would say this. So I think you know from experience, and you've been on the board for quite a while. I know some of the other members have as well. It's always preferable to have the board close out with a set of plans that are, you know, have been thoroughly reviewed and jive with each other. I think it's possible for the board to vote and condition the project tonight, but it's not as clean as having one more confirmation of that all the plans are in order and referring to a draft decision that's been prepared, as you pointed out, referencing the appropriate findings and then including within that some specific conditions similar to what was done across the street, some specific conditions that clarify some details that are relevant. So for instance, clarification as to the the open space being preserved and the playground being accessible and roadway improvements being done in coordination with the city, you know, some some conditions like that are typically included when the board takes its vote to approve. So I know that that the developer is looking for a certain timeframe, but it's up to the board whether or not what is before you tonight is adequate for that or whether you want to look at the draft decision first before voting on it.
Okay, so that that really got at my question. Usually, what we started doing is taking a vote and then having the draft decision afterward. And just making sure that that jives with what we believe we voted on. In this case, I think I heard you say that we should go through all of this now to make sure we have the content for the decision that we would wait until the next meeting to see the draft decisions and vote on them at the same time. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I think that would make the most sense. So I think, you know, I obviously from the staff report, you know that we we think that the there's every reason for the from our perspective, every reason for the board to make the appropriate findings to approve the project. The some of the conditions that obviously I've picked up on from the discussion tonight. And again, I just to volunteer that to assist the board, it might include.
Before you do that, don't they have to separate out? They have to be taken in consideration. Some go with the OSRD, some go with the 6C special permit?
That is correct. And I would suggest just keeping it organized as you pointed out, just for clarity for the record. Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to go through. I'm sorry I had to cut you off. If we leave any out as we go through each of these applications with listing the special permits, you could include it at that time rather than listing them all now and then having to sort them out.
Sure, okay.
Okay, now, also procedurally, we have to begin by, as it says here in the staff report, informing the applicant whether we want the conventional subdivision plan or the OSRD plan. I mean, it's pretty clear we want the OSRD plan, but are we required to take a vote on that?
Yes, I would confirm that for the record. That's I mean, I think it goes without saying, as you pointed out, but we should confirm that for the record to make it clear that was the board's finding that 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 layout is preferred, that project is preferred.
I think that's safe to do right now. Could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Don't move.
Who is that?
Don Walters.
Thank you. Second? Second, Anne. Thank you, Anne. And I'll do a roll call. James Bruegger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford abstains. Leah McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tinter?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. Thank you. Okay, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So just to aid in your process through the OSRD and 6C, you won't have to go through all the subdivision findings because, as you know, we will be withdrawing the subdivision request because it will be an A and R because it's not a public road. So you would just need to approve the OSRD as presented in the 6C, and then we'll submit the A and R with the final decision next time.
Good. Thank you very much. So starting with the OSRD special permit, there are a list of permit criteria which seems to have been met, so I'm not going to read through all of them. There are some special conditions we should list here. And I believe there's one waiver that the applicant has to request. But can we vote on it before Andy, can we vote on it, assuming it's going to come in in writing?
Well, we have that. So I would suggest that I think it's at the beginning of our staff report for this particular project.
Oh, no, no, this is the waiver for lot size and frontage on lot one. This is for the OSRD specifically.
Yeah, so I would actually suggest just the board approve that reduction in lot size as shown on the most recent drawing.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve a waiver for lot size and frontage for lot one with regard to the 25 foot no disturb zone.
Actually, do you need to have that the 25 foot reference or can we just reference?
Yeah, I would just take out the reference if, you know, my suggestion would be to just reference the reduced lot size as shown on the plan because what it does is it shows the total square footage of, you know, 7,000 and some change in lieu of the 10,000 square foot typical.
Got it. Thank you. So that should be, excuse me, Linda, that should be reflected in the minutes, just waiver for lot size and frontage for lot one as reflected in the plan. Okay. Rick moves. Do I have a second?
A second. Leah.
Thank you, Leah. All right, roll call. James Bruegger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya abstains. Leah?
Yes.
Rick Tinter?
Yes.
MJ Verden?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. All right, let's see if I've got all the special conditions that go with the OSRD. Andy and Attorney Mead, please keep me honest on this. I've got, and I don't know if all of these really should be special conditions, so it's going to be an education for me. Deed for and I'm going to just list them as bullet points. The wording can be done by the staff and putting it into the draft decision. The deed for lot one, the yeah, the deed for the structure on lot one has a no disturbance has a no disturbance beyond the lot line. That same deed has a disclosure about the city facilities on Colby Farm Lane. And that deed also reflects that there are no, there's no residential parking in the public spaces in front of the playground. There's, I believe, just one homeowners association relevant condition for this permit, which is stating their responsibility for the playground with an easement for city access.
Madam Chair, that would also include the disclosure about the facilities as well as no parking in the public spaces.
Okay, so that goes here instead of the 6C.
No, it's going to go both. Correct.
Oh, I tried to sort these out unnecessarily. Good, makes it easier. Okay. And I believe we should have a condition on street improvement plan to be agreed with DPW and approved by the planning board before the issuance of the eighth occupancy permit, unless anyone on the board or anyone else has another wording for that.
This is Andy, just one possibility, whether it would make sense to just leave that, review of that plan to Public Services, just because ultimately speaking, I don't know if there's going to be a situation in which the planning board would not approve what Public Services has reviewed, but that's just my.
Actually, you can't do that.
No, the control is ours and it has to do with releasing the final occupancy permit.
Well, I guess, I guess what, the reason I bring that up, Lisa and Bonnie, it's up to you, of course, what you want to do. But I just, I bring that up because it begs the question sometimes with these projects, if the details of the plan to restore, restoration, restore the way that's affected by, the public way that's affected by the project have not been worked out yet. It begs the question, should the board continue the hearing and wait for the details to be included in a motion or a condition that's clear when approving the project? So the board has that detail when it's approving a project rather than after the fact.
Well, may I speak to that point, actually? So it's not unusual for the board to have a condition that you come back on a particular detail and have them approve it later. It actually violates the chapter 40A, section nine, to have a special permit conditioned on approval by somebody else, a condition approved by somebody else, because there's no appeal authority. And so.
Right, I'm not, Attorney Mead, I'm not arguing that. My point is that if you have not sufficiently, working with your client, worked out the details with Public Services, it is up to the planning board to determine whether or not they feel that information should be reviewed prior to approval, rather than kicking the ball down the road to a later date at which there's less focus on those issues. That's my only point.
Well, if you can get DPW to sit down with the applicant and have that discussion before the draft decision is put together, which is like next Wednesday or Friday, then we can have that detail. Otherwise, it's going to hold up the whole decision.
Yeah, I'd like to leave it open right now. I'd like to have that condition. Our goal is to have this stuff worked out. Matt has worked very hard to get the baseline information done. I don't think we're that far off. Jamie has been responsive. And John Eric, it's just, it's just a condition of the situation that everybody's in. So I think we'd love to have it worked out before next week. But if not, the applicant would request that type of condition.
Any board members want to weigh in on this one? So Andy, you're saying that we should have the details of this plan in place before we approve the condition?
Yeah, I guess my, my comment here is that that is a decision that's left to the board. I, you know, from my perspective, given the projects that I've seen in my career, I would prefer to approve a project knowing that the planning board is fully aware of what the nature of those improvements are and incorporates them by reference in the decision, rather than leaving those details to some later date. I think, you know, we have, you know, just by example, the Hamilton Estates subdivision, where there were houses proposed originally and the board did not actually approve house plans for that project. Approved the whole project, including historic preservation of a main structure there, but without any clarity as to the detailed plans for houses that would be right next to that historically sensitive structure. So my only point here is that because it's within the planning board's purview to look at those issues, you can say, we'll look at them later on. But if you feel it's important enough to look at prior to approval of the project, meaning the detail, not the condition, then you would want to resolve that before the approval. It can be done, as Lisa said, it can be done either way. It's just, it'd be nice, and for most projects, if we can confirm those details prior to board approvals.
I appreciate that. And you said that we would have less leverage if we left it as a later plan to be approved by the planning board. But we do have an occupancy permit to hold on to. And it seems to me that that is, and we could put more than one if you want. But I think that is some leverage that would require some action on the applicant's part before we release it.
I agree. Here's my other thing. I would suggest that here's kind of maybe a happy medium. Maybe before next week, we can actually have a detailed list. Maybe we can at least get the detailed list of how the road is going to be improved for the actual plans then to be generated prior to the issuance of the seventh or eighth occupancy permit and at the board's approval. But at least you would have the.
My, I think that makes a lot of sense, because what it captures is the essence of what the nature of the improvements will be. It doesn't have to be the details, you know, on a specific plan per se, but it captures the essence of what the board agrees with in terms of the improvements to the public way that's being affected by the project.
I'm agreeable. I think we can get that done.
Okay, good compromise. Thank you. All right. That's all I had for this OSRD special permit. We're looking at all the conditions in one place being the same for the other permit. So Andy, do you want to add to those conditions?
Yeah, I mean, I think it sounds like you've captured everything you talked about a lot. One, I just want to make clear as well, the, I'm not sure if you've missed it, but the, the one about the remaining open space being conveyed for interest to the city, the same language essentially that we had in the subdivision across the street or the OSRD across the street.
Okay.
But I think you've captured all the other conditions. We have that associate, the language, the disclosure about the city facilities down the street. That was an important one for the city officials. So, you know, that's, I think you've captured any of the conditions that we've thought of on our end.
Okay.
I have a question about this. The easement for the playground area, does that have to be defined? At what point does that have to be defined in terms of?
Well, I think that's actually left to the mayor and the city council as far as, you know, acceptance. I mean, the question here is, they will, they're obligated to do it if the city wants to accept it. So.
So here's, yeah, so here's how we've done that, here's how it's worked in the, and we can just repeat the conditions in the toll one in Evergreen, Rick. And that is, we provide a draft of the easement to the city. City solicitor reviews it. And then it goes to the city council and the mayor. And we can put a condition in to make sure that that is conveyed prior to issuance of the last certificate of occupancy.
That's what I was getting at. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just drew a blank. What are we talking about?
The easement for the playground being conveyed prior to the issuance of the last certificate of occupancy.
Okay. So we'll move on to the 6C special permit. I believe there's one waiver. Did you officially request it having to do with the design of the turnaround for the fire truck access? Just because that was agreed, but in Phil's peer review, he said it's a city requirement to have a certain configuration. And because you have a different one, he suggested that we ask for, that you ask for a waiver for that. Is that correct?
Yes, and we'll submit that in writing, but yes, that would be one of the requests.
Okay, Andy, could we take a vote on that right now and put it to bed?
Yes, yes, that's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Bonnie, before you do that, I have a question.
Yes.
What, first of all, why isn't that part of the OSRD? And I guess the second related question is, why do we even need a 6C? Because the OSRD explicitly allows multiple dwellings on one lot.
Andy, you've answered this in the past. I'd like you to do it again.
The, so we have, I mean, I don't know, from Attorney Mead's perspective, there's a benefit seen from, you know, a development perspective. But the OSRD does allow the multifamilies, but not two structures on one lot, unless I'm mistaken. And I think that unless there's a.
That's.
It does allow multiple dwelling units by, in a condominium form of ownership, which this sounds like what this OSRD is.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yep. Yeah, I don't know, Attorney Mead, do you have a?
So that's, so it's been, it's, you know, I guess I'd call it tradition. That's been required in the past, Rick. So that's why we submitted it, because that's what the city has required in the past. So, you know, you know, I'm at the board's pleasure, but if I have to write a zoning opinion on this, I'd prefer to have both of the permits issued.
Okay, it just, it seems unnecessary and messy, but that's the way we've always done it.
Yeah, and I actually, I don't know if Caitlin or Lisa, if you recall, but did Jennifer identify that on her zoning determination? Is that why, is that partly where this?
Yeah, I have to look back at it. Andy, I don't have it in front of me.
Rick makes a fair argument, but I think, you know, regardless of the extra paper, a couple of pages of paper that's going to be filed. I think we've done all this process and I think that, as Lisa pointed out, it's good for the title to, to make sure all bases are covered. So while I agree with you, it seems like it's duplicative potentially. We can confirm with, you know, I can't say that there's a good rationale for having both, per se, but I think it'd be cleaner to have both for the record moving forward.
Okay, in that case, my first question was, why is the waiver for the turnaround not included in the OSRD special permit?
Well, I think it should be.
Yeah, I got that wrong. That's, this is Bonnie. I got it wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm moving it right now, OSRD. Pretend that I asked for this waiver request to the vote on the waiver request during the OSRD and I'll take a motion.
I'm moved.
Anne, second? May I have a second?
I'll second it. It's Leah.
Thank you. And is this clear for everybody that this has, is an administrative detail, but it's covered by, by the plan? Okay, I'll take a roll call on this. James Bruegger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Anne Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya abstains. Leah?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. I'm sorry, Tanya, I could just ask you to abstain directly, and I will in the future. Okay, so we have special permit conditions listed here for the 6C. I think the only one that requires a special permit, I mean, a special condition as an extension is the, something about the, we've always done this in the past, the affordable housing documentation. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, we, well, we have typical language we carry for that. We would put that in the draft for you.
Okay. And here it says in the, in the staff report, the open space at the rear of the property and/or convey it, a conservation restriction on it or and/or convey it to the city. We've already agreed that it's going to be conveyed to the city, so the and/or is not relevant.
Correct. So, yeah, I'll ask Caitlin as we're finalizing that draft, just to correct that language for the final version.
And finally, do we want to add any of the public benefits listed by Attorney Mead tonight as agreed with the mayor as adding to the, the benefits for this 6C?
Yeah, I think we should add that to the, Caitlin's done a good job of drafting some findings for the board. And I think we could just add a couple of phrases in there to capture that as well as additional public benefits noted for the record.
Okay, so there'll be findings, yeah, okay. And is there anything else that we need to add to the here? I think it's, as we said earlier, the same special conditions will carry over to the 6C from the OSRD. All right, then we're prepared, we're ready to look at major site plan review findings?
Okay.
I think everything's here the way it's, I don't think anything else came up other than I had a note to myself about this swale being removed, but that's part of the discussions that's going to happen with the update, upgrade of the street, correct?
Correct, yep.
That's not an issue there.
Yep.
Then there's nothing new unless any board member has something to add.
Yeah, I think that one's pretty straightforward, just as it's drafted, where you're basically meeting the, noting that the applicant's met the findings required by the ordinance or the criteria for approval.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to recommend a motion to continue, to continue so that we have a draft decisions. We have, they have provided all the updated plans and what else was I going to do? I'm losing it. Oh, and, and take a vote, well, in preparation for a vote, maybe. I don't know if we have to say that for the next meeting, but we'll hold off on the vote until we have all those things finalized. Is that correct?
Gotcha. So Caitlin and I will finalize that and we'll provide that to you for the next meeting, then I assume, and the board would then vote at that point.
Correct. Have I left anything off the list?
Well, no, I think that, I don't know if you've actually said it, but this all assumes we're going to get a new plan set sometime next week.
Yes, yes, yeah. We really do need to have all that. They know what they're going to do and they could do it in pencil tonight on the design. So there's no reason why they can't just look that up and.
Chair, I have one more, you know, this, this landscape plan that we just got tonight, we hadn't had a chance to review. I did, as we're sitting, as I'm sitting here, I did find one more thing that troubles me. And I'd like to bring it up. It's a very minor thing, but it's important, which is the handicapped ramp at the crosswalk shouldn't be there. Because what it means is you go up onto the ramp and then you go down the other side. That's the only thing that's raised as far as I can see. It's all, the, the crosswalk is at the same level as that, as the handicap parking space. So, I mean, there's no sidewalk for the handicap ramp to connect to.
Right, so we'll coordinate those plans, Rick, to make sure that they reflect the appropriate entry there.
So you know, what, what really would make sense to me and would be much more visible is to extend the landing area from the handicap space out to the edge of the right of way and then over to the crosswalk, just a striped area. Because it's all going to be level on the pavement. And you don't want to have somebody going up, turning a wheelchair, ninety degrees and going down again.
Okay. Yeah, Matt's still on, so I'm sure we'll take care of that.
Matt Hammer, Lance Limples. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We'll, we'll keep extending that grade out to the right of way and it'll tie into the crosshatching for the handicaps piece.
And just crosshatch it to show that it's part of that pathway.
Yeah, correct. And we'll, yes, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Okay, planning board members? Sorry.
Is that, are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion on the second choice on the staff report that also includes up, submittal of updated plan sheets.
I'm moved.
So that says, motion to close public hearing for definitive subdivision application, site plan review application and the 6C application and OSRD applications, that closes the public hearing. With detailed findings and conditions to be reviewed by the planning board in the form of a draft decision prepared by the Office of Planning and Development, and updated plan sheets to be submitted by the applicant at the next meeting.
Not at the next meeting, prior to?
This is going to be a review at it, so obviously, they have to be submitted before then.
Yep.
And the next meeting is?
June 3rd, I think, right?
It's a full agenda, but this should go very quickly, I've said that before, June 3rd, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll give you June 3rd, unless something, you know, happens before then. Yes, can I have a second?
Second, Don Walters.
Thanks, Don, we'll do a roll call, James Bruger?
Yes.
Beth Delio?
Yes.
Anne Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford? She's going to abstain, she's so used to my telling her that. Leah McGovern?
Yes.
Rip Tainer?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. We have another public hearing, everybody. If we were in the room together, I'd say we take a break, but I think we're just going to go on, and if you need a break, mute yourself and take off, and come back. This is Sports Medicine North, 20 Major, 20 Henry Graff Road, major site plan review and special permit. We first need to do an application completeness vote and request, and approval of requested waivers. Those waivers include preparation of a full traffic and access impact study. There is some, just for the record, there is some trip generation information in the environmental impact report. I think that's the only wa, the only waivers. And also a waiver for preparation of a planting plan by a registered landscape architect. So may I have a motion for application, a complete application and approval of waivers?
Don, so moved?
Thank you, second, MJ, thank you, MJ. Take a vote, James Bruger?
Yes.
Beth Delio?
Yes.
Anne Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Thank you, Leah McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainer?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
And Bonnie Sontag, yes. And we'll have the application presentation to get us going, please.
Great, for the record, my name is Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group, representing the project proponents, Sports Medicine North Orthopedic Surgery and Conserv Group. This application for special permit, major site plan review. The proponent proposes to develop the approximate two-acre parcel at 20 Henry Graff Jr. Road, shown on the assessors' maps as parcel 82-2B, as a medical office use. The development will consist of the construction of a 20,000-square-foot gross-floor area medical office building with related site improvements, including an asphalt parking area, access driveway landscaping, stormwater management facilities, utility connections, and other related site infrastructure. The site is located within the industrial I-1 zoning district, and it is not located within a DEP Zone 2 or the town's aquifer protection zone. Andy, if you could switch to sheet EC1, we'll talk a little bit about the existing site conditions.
Chair, with me just one second, I'll switch over to that.
Sure. While you're in process, the property obviously has frontage and Henry Graff Jr. Road to the east, is boarded by developed commercial and light industrial property to the north, south, and west. The parcel is basically devoid of vegetation, it's the last undeveloped parcel of upland in the park. It's historically been used as a contractor's yard since the late 1990s with storage of heavy equipment and large stockpiles of various types of fill. The site is bounded by bordering vegetated wetlands along all of the sides. The topography of the site ranges in elevation from about 16, slightly west of the center of the site, to elevation 13 or 14 at the wetland boundaries. And it's important to note that the site has a municipal drainage easement, a 20-foot, 20-foot wide easement that traverses the northern bound, or the eastern boundary of the site along its frontage at Henry Graff Jr. Road. It is a man-made wetland ditch. If you know Henry Graff Jr. Road, there's a, there's a complex series of pipes and culverts and ditches in that area. And the, the ditch does contain some wetland characteristics, some wetlands vegetation, so it has been flagged as a bordering vegetated wetland by Hughes Environmental.
Brad, if I could just interject, I'm sorry, which plan sheet was it you wanted to?
EC1, EC1, Andy, I think you want to go in the other direction, back towards the
Okay.
the third sheet in the set, from the cover?
Yeah. It's EX1, is that correct?
EX1.
Yeah, EX1, yeah, sorry, I just want to make sure that there's, there's a different lettering system, so I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
There you go. The, you can see the site's bounded by BBW, flagged by Hughes Environmental. We had our first meeting with the Conservation Commission last night, the project was very well received by the commission, and it was continued to the June 2nd meeting for a minor plan revision relating to providing some additional storage capacity in the ditch along the frontage of the property, that we'll talk about in a little bit. The site's not located in a FEMA floodplain. The soil on the site identified by the NRCS Soil Conservation Service is a, various soil groups, but it's a hydrologic group C and D soil, which means not very permeable with high groundwater conditions. The soil testing that we performed throughout the site corroborated the results of the, of the soil survey, and basically what we found was the soils to be comprised of fill down to about four or five feet, with a, with a small, silty gravelly sand layer underlying by apparent clay layer. So the site not very conducive to stormwater infiltration. If we could turn, Andy, now to sheet C1, which is our site layout plan, should be the very next sheet in the set. There you go. This is essentially our layout and materials plan. This plan demonstrates compliance with the dimensional controls in Section 6 of your, of the ordinance, as well as the parking calculations in Section 7B in the ordinance for off-street parking and loading. And the, looking at the land usage table for the industrial I-1 zoning district, it identifies the existing required and proposed site conditions. The project will fully comply with all the dimensional requirements of the industrial I-1 zoning district. The access driveway was designed to align with the existing curb cut and gravel access to the contractor's yard. It's 24 feet wide. There is stop sign control at the exit. The guard, guardrails have been recently added to the plan, we'll talk about some of the city engineers' comments in a, in a few minutes. The parking aisles are 24 foot wide and spaces 18 by 9 that comply with your ordinance. I think it's important to note that Chief Bradbury did review our plan, had some concerns about the ability of his aerial ladder truck to negotiate the site. We provided him with a, a fire truck turning plan. He reviewed it and issued a memo to the planning board on May 11th, or an email to the board on May 11th, indicating that all of his concerns were satisfied. The, there's cement concrete sidewalk proposed to basically skirt the building, and on, on most of three sides, the interior landscape islands comply with the 5% requirement per Section 15 of the zoning ordinance. And some, one of the changes that was made to the plan set since its original, since the original filing on March 18th, was pursuant to some comments received at a, a Zoom meeting with department heads in early April, and one of the comments was to make those landscape islands larger, more prominent, so that they could accommodate some trees, and add some more plantings between the drainage ditch on Henry Graff Jr. Road and the northern, or the eastern boundary of the parking lot. And we'll talk about that further when we get to the landscaping plan in a few minutes. The, there are pole lights shown in various locations around the perimeter of the parking area, there's no wall pack letting proposed. The pole lights will comply with the requirements in your zoning ordinance. There'll be LED, 18 feet in height, dark, meet the dark star, dark sky requirements. In the southwest corner of the site, there's a dumpster pad location that will be enclosed by a vinyl fence and gate. And there are, in the extreme northwest and southwest portion corners of the site, there's a small amount of modular block retaining wall proposed to, I guess, minimize the impacts to the bordering vegetated wetland that is very close to the limit of work. If we could turn to sheet C2. And this plan is our grading and drainage plan. I won't get into great detail on it, but essentially, the goal in designing this site was to minimize the earthwork while complying with local and state regulations relating to stormwater and erosion control. So what's really driving the site grades is the groundwater elevation. And basically, the, the state requirements that we need, we cannot design a stormwater management system and intercept the seasonal high groundwater elevation, so we've got an elevate, we've got a slab proposed at elevation 18, and essentially, the site slopes away from the building towards various catch bases, inlet devices, which in turn convey flows through a treatment stream down to a proprietary stormwater device, a first defense unit, provide additional removal of total suspended solids, discharging into two stormwater detention facilities, one in the extreme western portion of the site that we refer to as Detention Basin 2. And Detention Basin 1, in the eastern portion of the site, takes the runoff from the eastern portion of the site in the front, I guess, the front of the building, as well as half of the roof. And it's important to note that if you follow the plan, that the stormwater runoff that's being discharged through a, kind of a connector, or I guess an equalizer pipe from Detention Basin 2 to a swale behind the building, and eventually, at a very, a very slow, very flat grade, the water migrates down to Detention Basin 1, which in the large storm, about the elevation of the, of the stormwater and elevation, and Detention Basin 1 is regulated by an outlet control structure, which slowly releases flows to the pre-existing location and drainage pattern at a rate that's less than the pre-development rate of runoff, which is one of the requirements of the local ordinance, as well as the state stormwater management regulations. We also comply with the treatment standard, the state stormwater management regulations of removal of 80% total suspended solids. Within the drainage report, there's an extensive construction phase, operation and maintenance plan. And there's also in the plan set, which I won't get into in detail, an erosion and sediment control plan. And in addition, in the drainage report, there is a post-development phase ongoing maintenance plan, or post-development phase plan, that discusses the ongoing maintenance of the best management practices for perpetuity. It's important to note that the project did undergo a peer review from PGC Engineering, Phil Christensen. We did make some drainage, some revisions to the drainage calculations at his request. Most of the revisions were to the post-development hydrologic model. It was, he asked us to use a different methodology, and the conclusion of the analysis was that there were no real changes to the design of the stormwater management system. And in his May 1st letter to the planning board, he indicated that we had resolved all of his issues and recommended approval of the stormwater management plan. If we can move on to sheet C3, which is our utility plan, should be the next one. This the, there you go, this, this plan is going to need more refinement as the construction documents are refined. There is some additional coordination that has to occur with the project mechanical engineer. But essentially, we have reviewed the connection requirements with the water department and DPW, the sewer connection is illustrated on the plan. We have two connections, one for domestic water, one for, one for fire protection. The fire protection line is a six-inch line, as required by DPW, the water department, and at the request of Chief Bradbury, Deputy Chief Bradbury, we added a yard hydrant, which is adjacent to the building, the, the east side of the building, just off the paved parking area. So I guess, moving on to, let's move on to the landscape plan, which is the colored plan, a few sheets away. Sheet LA1. There you go. We, this plan was developed in collaboration with Tom Hughes of Hughes Environmental. And what this plan illustrates is, obviously, the plantings, the trees that are proposed, as well as some shrubs and some surface treatments, and the legend down below indicates the various type of surf, surface treatments that we're proposing for grasses. The the areas that are probably five feet around the, the perimeter of the paved parking area will be planted with like low-mow fescue that needs to be maintained, I guess, as regularly as you would, you would maintain your lawn. And the area- And um, the area that extends from generally that extends from that low mow fifth, low mow fescue area to the limited work. Is a, is proposed to be a New England showy wildflower mix. And that does not need to be maintained as often perhaps mowed once a year. The areas within the stormwater management facilities, the detention basins are proposed to be seeded with a conservation mix. A New England. Uh, conservation wildlife mix. That does not need to be maintained on a weekly basis, but. Probably mowed three or four times a year. So the, this plan was again, well received by the commission. And they were. Um, I guess. Very happy that um, the site that is currently. Basically devoid of vegetation and gravel from almost from, from. BVW line to BBW line on all sides is now going to be stabilized. With um, with various grasses um, that will. Improve water quality uh to the, to the, the neighboring wetland, the bordering wetland. And obviously result in uh, less. Erosion control um impacts or issues relating from erosion control. Um. The. Since. Our original submission on March eighteenth. Uh, some revisions were made to the plans. We did re submit a set of plans on April twenty-ninth in response to PGC Engineering's first peer review. And we talked about some minor modifications that were made to the drainage calculations. And some of the, some minor modifications made to some of the drainage details, the detail sheets. Some of the other revisions we, we talked about were as a result of the, the Zoom meeting that we had with town departments in early April. Again, enhanced landscape islands. You see on the landscaping plan and uh additional plantings. We did add. Trees within those islands, more trees within the islands and added. Uh, four or five more trees in the area. That are right now earmarked as red maples that are between. In, in, within that. New England wildflower mix area between the limit of work and the parking lot. The. City engineer John Eric. Uh, issued a letter or to the planning board on May eighth. And had some comments relative to. The design of the um, the entrance driveway and a sidewalk that we had originally proposed. To run between the drainage ditch and the curb line on Henry Graff Jr. Road. And in his memo to the planning board. He recommended. He, he was strongly recommended not installing the sidewalk. At this time. Um. He went on to say piecemealing sections of sidewalk inevitably results in constructing them in an improper horizontal location. And an improper vertical location. And then went on to, to basically suggest that it should be. Part of a comprehensive plan really. Rather than piecemealing a segment of sidewalk and along that frontage. When. And we happen to agree with him that in looking at. Uh, kind of a broader view of Henry Graff Jr. Road and the, and the roadway network around the site, you have. A half a mile of road between. Pond Street and Mulliken Way with no sidewalk at all. And even as Mulliken Way extends. To Parker Street, there's really no sidewalk on Parker Street. There is, looks like a, a, a shoulder, a very large shoulder for. With, with, that is striped that is, could be. Could be a bike, a, a bike path of some sort, but no sidewalk at all. Um, and. And originally looking at this site when it was. Um. I think it was staff's recommendation at the, at the, at a, at an earlier meeting that we had in person. Before things shut down. In January that we had the sidewalk um. In looking at both sides of the road, uh, if, in my opinion, if you're going to be adding a sidewalk, it probably would be better located on the opposite side of the road. Because you have less. Uh, less drainage ditches. A network of drainage ditches um. That are presently located on that side of the road from. Pond Street to Mulliken Way. So um, again, that was a recommendation that. John Eric White. Made at uh, at staff's recommendation, we did. Reissue a set of plans. Monday morning. Which essentially shows. Uh, on sheet C two and C, C one and C two, no sidewalk. Uh, some of the other suggestions that. Uh, Mr. White made. Were uh, regrading the entrance way slightly. To, I guess, filling the entrance way, uh, bringing the grade up a little bit. Have to go back to sheet C two. Um. If you go back to sheet C two. Um, you'll see the. There's a contour fifteen and sixteen. That um, we modified and as a result, there's a little more fill placed in that entrance roadway. Um. Which resulted in the need to extend the existing twenty-four inch drainage culvert. By about ten feet and fill in about a hundred and fifty square feet of that drainage ditch. So um, the commission was in support of this. Filling. Again, but what they wanted us to do and what the only revision they asked us to make on the plan was to create. I guess some compensatory storage within that ditch. Um, it, within that area to um. To compensate for that, that's small amount of fill. The. Those were the extent of uh, and, and then, and then uh, the, the engineer also, Mr. White also suggested we add some wood beam guardrails, which we did on both sides of the proposed entrance. Um. I guess in.
Uh, this is Andy. I'm just wondering, it looks like we might have lost Brad. Uh, I assume he'll try to reconnect in just a moment. Um. I know that the applicant also submitted architecturals to us.
Is there anyone else representing the applicant um there to speak in addition to Brad?
There are actually, uh, Peter, I'm not sure if you wanted to comment or Roy, uh, at this time, or waiting for maybe Brad to reconnect.
I'm happy to comment. This is Roy Katignani. I'm, I'm a principal of conserve group, the architect and construction manager. And we certainly would be most comfortable commenting on the building itself. If you have questions, the use. Um, this is the. Uh, initial elevations, these are being developed further. I think we sent in today a. Colored rendering, it may not have gone onto your files, but it um, right now they're looking at a, a gray um. Beige tone for the brick and all that. That's the only thing it shows is a little bit. This is just a block sketch. It's not considered to be finished, but this is the general tone of that. At least the brick selection at the moment. Um. And uh, the building is two stories. It has two elevators to um. To service the uh clinic, which is on the second floor. Sports medicine is now in a local facility that they rent. Um, and they would be moving to taking the entire second floor. Exam rooms, procedural rooms, x-ray. To carry on their practice and on the lower floor, they would take a good half of it for their. Physical therapy operation, which is currently nearby. And they would have a portion of that first floor approximately half. Available for a tenant. None have been identified exactly at the moment, but. We think the potential is for a diagnostic um tenant that would be very complimentary to their practice. Um, building is um. Of course compliant with all current building codes. Um, it's not, not yet been submitted for building permit, of course. Um. But it sits here for your comment and. I'm happy to add to that story if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I lost the. I lost the connection. I'm back.
No worries. We just covered the architecture a little bit while you were away.
Great. Um. Are we done with the architectural?
I'm standing ready for questions.
We're gonna wait until um, we've heard everything and then come back. Um.
Yep. Uh, Brad, was there another drawing or plan sheet you wanted to show or was that the tail end of your overview?
Uh, that is, that's the, that's the, pretty much the overview of the engineering. I just wanted to, to. Comment that um. We did, we did submit, we believe the project meets all the criteria for a special permit. For this uh, for the medical use. We did submit a supplemental memo dated March eighteenth. With the. Application that highlights um, how we meet all the special permit criteria. Um, the, the project will be an asset. For the city of Newbury Port. Um.
Excuse me, excuse me. You don't need to go through them. It's fine.
That's fine. You have the memo.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got the memo. Thanks.
All right, that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, is there any, uh, is, there's a third person listed here. Um, I don't know what his expertise is. Do we hear from him as well, Andy?
Uh, my name is Peter Van Slike. I'm also with Conserv and uh, I think Roy has addressed the architectural.
Okay, so that's, that's it from the applicant?
That's all I have. Yep.
All right, just following our procedure, I need to open it to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this um, application? Andy, do you see any raised hands?
Yep, I do not see any hands raised at this time. I guess no interested parties in this project right now.
Okay, a closed public comment and open it to the planning board to ask questions of um. Any of the representatives of the applicant and on any of the plan sheets that have been uh discussed so far.
This is Don. I'll start off if I may. Uh, I guess this question would be either to the applicant and or uh, if Andy you know, but I believe the applicant. Uh, applicants have spoken to John Eric White. And he had some comments and I think earlier in your presentation, you mentioned you've designed this for the one hundred year flood. The, the city of Newbury, excuse me, the city of Newbury Port. Has a uh, resiliency plan and they talk about. Different scenarios and, and understanding a subject to various assumptions, but it, needless to say. The city in Newbury Port talks about designing roads and road, roadways and underground culverts. In certain areas, including the business park. So I was just curious. Um, in your discussions with John Eric White or the DPS, has this topic ever come up? Uh. Is it just a classic, has it ever come up?
They're. Not, not really. There was some discussion. At the meeting that we had in January um. That in, involving, I guess, some sort of a master plan at, to, to fill, to increase. The capacity of the piping systems and at some point fill these ditches in and. And Andy, you might recall this discussion, it, and I think. They indicated that they were, they were in the engineering department was in the process of um. Of completing or performing some sort of a detailed, an inventory of all the culverts and. In the area and, and preparing a, in preparation for a hydrologic study. So that, it was discussed, but. I don't, I'm not sure any of it's real imminent.
Yeah, there wasn't any uh, real focus on resiliency with respect to this particular development here. There are no concerns like that were raised by the city engineer that I'm aware of. Um, there, they have been, I think some of the planning board members know, but over the years, there've been a number of studies about. Flooding uh, in the business park and particularly the lower southern end. Um, and, and you know, high groundwater or um, or the, the low lying land and the fact, you know, that it's uh, clay conditions and whatnot. So I know that um, as, as Brad mentioned, there has been an ongoing effort and a repeated effort over the years, including recently. To look at the swales and to improve them over time, um, to better maintain them and to uh, get rid of blockages and things like that. But other than that, I'd have to defer to John Eric White, the city engineer.
Okay, thank, thank you both. Uh, just two more questions, quick ones, I hope, Bonnie and. Uh, in, in the landscape plan, uh, you, you have. Varying tree, shrubs, et cetera, and kind of going along with this, what, when Andy just said how it's high level and flooding or potential flooding. Are all these trees and shrubs somewhat resistant to high flood, uh, high water tables that they're not gonna? I mean, they're just, they're. They'll, they'll survive in this environment?
Well, certainly, yes, the red maples are um. A facultative species. Uh, they're found, they thrive in. In, in bordering vegetated wetland systems and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, and the last question is regarding sidewalk and the comment. And, and I would, I would agree, you know, if you put the sidewalk in piecemeal, but on the other hand, and this is really to Andy and, and the rest of the board. Do we have something like a sidewalk reserve fund? Because you can just imagine if we had ten new projects all. Built within each one, six months, we, we would, and at the end of the day, the city would be funding for the sidewalk. So it seems to me the applicant. Would have provided some type of sidewalk, but I think all agrees it, it doesn't make sense until there's, there's. A, a more consistent and methodical plan on this. So I guess Andy is, has, does this ever come up? Where we have some type of sidewalk reserve fund that the applicant would provide money and then it goes into. This account and eventually when we do something in this area, it's just less money that the city has to pay or the burden on the taxpayers.
Um, yeah, so it's a good question. Um, no, that hasn't been raised by the Department of Public Services. Um, I think there were two concerns that the city engineer was speaking to with respect to this project. I know, Don, you and the, and the number of the other planning board members have seen other projects. In the business park where there were discussions of sidewalks and whether to have one and where would they connect to and um, you know, getting the ball rolling with that as opposed to waiting for it to all be done at once, you know, at the city's expense or whatnot. Um, so um, I think here John Eric, the city engineer had two concerns. One was that um, and I don't necessarily disagree with him, that the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. Uh, might be a, a better, a more um, logical place to put it. And I think part of that was. His concern about uh drainage on the side of the site where this development is. Um, and I was just gonna pull up on the screen again, the um, the street view, but I think one of the things he was trying to avoid was. Um, some drainage issues uh, that would be associated with having a sidewalk in this location. Um, and the, the drainage rail sort of behind it. So um, there might be some, maybe, you know, warranted discussion here about whether or not some sort of contribution of sidewalk would have been done regardless. Uh, and perhaps, you know, some contribution could be made to that, but um, I think the assumption that at least John Eric has had, looking at the different sidewalk and drainage issues in the business park was that. It'd be better to have one on this side if we're gonna run something along the length of Graff Road. Um, I can say from a funding perspective that um, given the limited funds and the continual effort. For to fund various capital improvements around the city, including sidewalk improvements elsewhere. Uh, where their folks are more heavily using those sidewalks. It doesn't look likely that the city is gonna have money in the near future to install a sidewalk along these sections, but that goes back to your question about where does it make sense for applicants to um, get that ball rolling.
Thanks, Andy. Yeah, that's it, Bonnie.
Okay, um, anyone else have any other comments about this? I, I do, but I can wait.
I have, well, I think it's just a quick one. Um, I, I wish I knew this at the top of my head, but I thought we had a certain number of trees that were required per parking space. And I'm just wondering if that, this meets that requirement.
Brad, did you already speak to that with the islands? Were the number of trees also included?
Yeah, this was a concern. I don't know if Brad, uh, oh, yeah, I don't know. Actually, it looks like Brad might have lost his connection. I'm just gonna. Uh, Brad, I, I know we talked about this earlier and I, my recollection is this plan has been revised to address this tree count because we had raised that early in their review process that there weren't enough. Uh, with the distribution. Uh, Brad, are you able to speak to that now?
I just, yeah, if, if, when he comes back on, if we can just know whether or not it meets the count.
Yep, yeah, my recollection is that we confirmed that with this updated plan, but um, much to worry that he's having a trouble with you.
This is Peter Van Slike. I was part of those meetings and there was some concern raised about shade trees, particularly in the island. Those islands were enlarged slightly and red maples were added to accommodate that. Those islands were enlarged slightly and red maples were added to accommodate that, which, uh, was to the satisfaction, at least of conservation, last night when they looked at it.
Okay, that still doesn't answer my question, whether or not there's the appropriate number of trees per parking spaces.
Yeah, I cannot speak to that.
Well, we can circle back on that one, and when Brad comes back in a moment, I'm sure he can address that, because I, I know that we addressed that sometime back when, when reviewed early, part of the plans.
Did you have another question, Leah?
No, that was it.
All right, mine comes off of that as well. It has to do with landscaping, but if Brad's not there, we just gonna start a list for him? Is that correct, Andy?
Yes.
All right, um, grass is not the most ecologically, um, considerate, uh, planting. I'm just wondering, since they have wildflowers close to the grass, could they not replace the grass with all wildflowers? It would be less maintenance and it would be, um, it would, absorb water better and it wouldn't need, um, it wouldn't need the fertilizer and so on that grass needs. And secondly, I'd like to know if, um, more, um, landscaping, maybe to, something in, in addition, uh, to soften the, uh, front of the building on, um, Henry Graff Jr. Road could be installed. If this were not the industrial park, I would make an argument for moving the building so that the parking could be more to the side and the rear, but given its location in the business park, I don't think that's as big a concern as it would be elsewhere. But in exchange, I would like to see some more, um, softening with landscaping, the entrance, since this is a, a more of a business building and everyday people will be going in and out of there. I think it could be made a little more attractive, but make sure that the plantings at the, uh, front do not interfere with the sightlines on the, um, on the road.
So this is Roy, I can add that the, um, conservation discussed plantings, you can see the trees that are proposed along the margin, the green margin along Henry Graff. And those were added as a specific request for, um, a little bit of additional screening of the parking itself, the cars, that is, um, more so than the building. And then, of course, there's a planting area on the other side of the drive, uh, just behind the sign, just to the west of the sign. And, um, I'm trying to fill in a little here, just simply because, you know, I wasn't at every one of these presentations. Brad is the man, um, but I believe there was much discussion, um, with the staff and, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we're fully in compliance with a number of plants. I just like not to say it without Brad present. So I think there are some limitations with regard to the BVW there. You can see the brighter green.
I'm sorry.
There you go. So Brad, I'll let, um, Andy.
I apologize for the IT issues here. Well, I, I didn't hear the question.
I, I was wondering, this is Bonnie Sontag, um, I was wondering if, um, some more plantings could be put in the front of the building, um, to, to help it be a little more friendly to the everyday people who are coming into it as opposed to other structures in the industrial park that might not have that kind of traffic. But as long as they don't interfere with the sightlines to coming in and out of the property.
You, you're saying adjacent to the driveway?
Uh, yeah, on, uh, on Henry Graff Jr. Road, yeah, that, so, so when you're driving, when I'm driving up to go to physical therapy, I'm coming to this site and I don't wanna feel like I'm going into an industrial-built site. I wanna feel like it's, you know, an office building that I would go to for, um, you know, for whatever I'm, I, I need to have done. I'm not a truck driver dropping stuff off for an employee coming into a manufacturing facility.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to impede the site distance that's there presently, but, um, some low-lying shrubs, I mean, they can't be, you really can't be any higher than three feet.
Are those what are already there? Or is that?
That's pretty much, that's the scrub that's there, we'd like-
No, no, I'm sorry, on the plan, what, what you have drawn on the plan, is that as much as you can put in there?
Are you, are you referring to within the right-of-way, or are you referring to by, as you come in on the left, that cluster?
No, on the right-of-way, on the right. Those, yeah.
We're proposing some trees there. Um, I guess we could add a, we could add a few shrubs around-
Are they evergreen trees and are they gonna be covered all year round?
Those are red maples, but we're, what we're proposing is a, again, a wildflower mix. The darker green that extends from the lighter green border is a wildflower mix, so that's the area between that, the, the heavy black dash line is the limit of work. So the area between the black line and the lighter green line is a, is a wildflower mix, and so those grasses should grow up to be, you know, be two or three feet high.
Okay, that's fine. Now that I've got you here, um, I made a question earlier. Could you replace the, all of the grass with wildflower mix because it would be more environmentally, um, sensitive and would require less maintenance?
You wouldn't want a wildflower mix extending all the way up to the parking lot. I think it'd be a maintenance, there'd be some maintenance issues, that, that's why we, you know, you might have cars maybe overhanging a little bit, and the, the taller grass is growing, kind of drooping over into the parking lot.
All right, well, now, now that I see that it's only the, the green, that white green there around the sort of bordering is the only part that's grass, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with it then. Um, signage. Uh, Andy, should we see a design for the sign before we approve?
Yeah, um, I know that, and there have been different ways that boards have treated this in the past, as far as approving it upfront with the signage. Again, that's something we recommend, um, having approved at the time of approval, rather than kicking that ball down the road. Um, I know that, uh, it's pretty typical in the business park to have a freestanding sign. Um, and I suspect it might be, I, I suggest something similar to what's been done elsewhere, the sort of two granite posts and panel in between, something consistent and simple, but, um, you know, it's up to the board whether or not to have the applicant come back with that detail, but, you know, typically we recommend all those details being included at the time of approval, just for clearness in the plans.
Then, then let's see it, um, because we're gonna continue this anyway to make sure everything's, um, I think we're gonna continue this, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any outstanding concerns that-
Well, you're gonna see the Concom on June 2nd, that was one note, and I wanted to make sure that everything was clean with them before we vote on it, so we can have a draft decision ready by next time. But, um, we would wanna have their final approval, we'd wanna see, um, oh, confirmation that the, oh, this may have come up while you were offline. That the appropriate number of trees per parking spaces has in fact been met. Did you say it had been?
Oh, yeah, we have, um, yeah, and the requirement is, like, are you referring to, um, one tree per 10 spaces?
Yes.
Uh, where we, we will, we exceed that, but by a lot.
Okay.
You count, count the trees around the perimeter and within the landscape islands where, where probably got, we have, uh, per 10 parking spaces, what do we have, 90 spaces? So we have many more than nine trees.
I think that it requires the trees be in the parking lot separating, it, it's for the shade of, uh, on the parking lot.
It actually says, it actually says, located either in the parking area or within 10 feet of it. That's, that's, that's in section-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I would concur with that. I think the, the basis for that was to have it, as Bonnie pointed out, in the islands, but also in the areas immediately surrounding the parking area, so that it's possible to provide a cover for the parking.
Which, which we've, which we've accomplished with this plan, and then the other requirement that we talked about earlier is, uh, 5% of the interior of the parking areas has to have landscape islands with trees, so, and we meet that requirement as well.
Okay. Um, so we would wanna see, um, what the sign's gonna look like. We want, um, do we, you've already submitted the new plans for, that include the sidewalk being removed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, what else is outstanding?
We've, we've, we've done everything basically that, uh, city engineer, John Eric, has requested. We've, we've met all of the requirements of the fire department. You have a, an email from him saying that he's fully satisfied with the plan. We have met all of the requirements from the peer review engineer. Mr. Christensen, you have a letter from him saying, well, he's endorsing the, the drainage approval of the drainage design. Um, yeah, just about the sign at this point?
Yeah, Brad, if I could just interject, I think the, um, from the city's review, and Caitlin, you know, jump in here if you'd like, if you have anything to add, but I think, uh, everything has been resolved from an engineering perspective. I think the only detail that hadn't been covered, um, unless the board has any, you know, any concerns about it, was just, are there any questions about the architecture? Because the, uh, with respect to the site plan, uh, we believe that all the site issues have been addressed. Um, and I know that they've been tracking with the Conservation Commission, the same approval process. So I guess that's all I'd have to offer on that.
Okay, and again, the, the modification we're making for conservation, involves a little bit of regrading in the front of the property near, just to the right of the entrance near that culvert, just to provide 150 square feet of storage area. That was driven by the change that the city engineer requested result, you know, that involving extending the culvert 10 feet and so forth, so that's, that's the change. That the, we, we're gonna be resubmitting that plan by Monday or Tuesday of next week. It's really just Sheet C2, which is our grading plan.
I think there's also some wetlands, some management as well.
Well, they wanted, they wanted more information from Tom Hughes on the invasive control plan. And what we, what we did ask the commission to do to, I guess, beautify the area within the drainage ditch and along the front edge of the property was to try to, eradicate the phragmides and other, um, invasive species. So they wanted more information as to how Tom was proposing to do that.
Uh, th- this is Bonnie again. You can't eradicate phragmides. I mean, that's a multi-year, uh, effort. So, I don't know what you're, what they're talking about, but that's not our area of expertise. And you gotta double-check before you commit to do something that's not realistic.
Well, I think it's in a, I think, I think we're going to make an attempt, and I, I understand that it's a, sometimes a losing battle that you're never, you're never gonna win, but I think more of the phragmides, more of the invasives in the, in the rear of the property were comprised of phragmides. I think there are other types of invasives in the front. And I, I don't recall what species.
Whatever you have to do, but just don't get over enthusiastic about it. Okay, we need to, um, just, um-
Bonnie, can I jump in really quick? I, I just wanted to, to follow up on your comment, um, I think Leah's too, on the, on the parking lot and the, and maybe some green. And I'm wondering if you could just take a look at, I mean, it, it does seem like there's a lot of pavement and you actually have more parking than you need. There's just a lot of parking for this building, it looks like. I, I don't know if you, I mean, I know that we need it by zoning, but it looks like you still are a little bit over on your zoning, and I'm just wondering if you could, you know, take a couple spots and maybe add, uh, some more islands into your parking lot, just to, to add a little bit of green, especially in some of those areas that, um, that don't have any, any greenery around them, and just to kind of reduce some of the impervious surface there.
And we'd be happy to, um, issue you a waiver if you are not gonna meet your numbers by the zoning requirement to support that idea.
They're over the zoning.
Yeah, they're over by six spots, and, um, and it still seems like a lot for this building, um, but, but I, I understand that our zoning regulation is a little crazy on parking, so, um, it just, if we could, you know, the trees around the perimeter are nice too, but it would be, I think the idea is to, to also not have so much, um, asphalt, um, impervious surface, and, and if there's a way that we can, you know, get rid of a few spots and maybe add some, some green, to allow for better drainage, um, I think that would be great.
Well, uh, we, we can certainly talk about it, but, um, I, I think, um, inherent to this use is, uh, and, and Roy at CONSERVE and Peter can speak better to this, they build these facilities all the time, it, that there's always a shortage in parking for these, this type of use. And in your bylaw, the requirement of providing only one space for two employees seems a little light, and that, that might be a concern as well. And we certainly don't want parking to spill over. People parking illegally within aisles and the, and the, within the parking lot are spilling out into the, into the street. So.
Yeah, I would, I would echo, um, the thought. Again, I, I think our, our goal is to seek approval and be reasonable, whatever you require, um, but I would just suggest that bear in mind that there are people in walkers, walking casts, crutches. Uh, the intent in locating the building in this spot was particularly to make the walk as short and safe and flat as possible for the ambulating public, uh, often elderly. So I would just suggest keep that in mind, that, you know, not having enough parking spaces or potentially as medical uses have traditionally needed more parking than an average office building. You know, this is not a primary care, so it's not a 15-minute turn, these are normal appointments, but, I didn't think that we had overdone it, and I think the applicant would much appreciate not having a reduction in parking.
I have a, a separate comment. That's okay?
Sure.
Um, I would like to request, uh, that the plan add five bike racks, which would fit in a nine-by-18 pad. And I think the appropriate place for that would be against the building, on the east side of the building, in that landscape area, so you could use the sidewalk to get to the front door. Uh, I think, you know, the city, has this complete streets policy, and I know we're under, um, we're sometime gonna get to a revision of the zoning ordinance, and I'm sure that will require bike parking. But right now, uh, we don't require it right now, but it certainly would be helpful because people are going to ride bikes to this, this building, and-
Employees might, um-
Oh, no, I, I, I ride my bike to my orthopedist, you know, so it's, it's, it's not, you know, I don't think that it's, I don't think you can consider all of these people to be, um, wheelchair-bound or, or non, non-ambulatory. I think there are people gonna be coming here who are, maybe have, are in sports and wanna solve a sports problem. And, uh, they would very likely be riding a bike, so I think, I think it's, it's really important. You know, unfortunately, we don't have that requirement yet, but I think it's a, it's a cheap addition, and, um, it certainly will serve a distinct segment of the population.
Can't see any objection to that.
And then, and again, that's just to the right of the main entrance, kind of adding a pad along the face of the building there.
Right, right in that green area, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Be, be like nine-by-18 and five bike racks, which would be, have space for 10 bikes.
Okay.
Other comments from the planning board? So Tanya, are you okay with, um, rescinding your request for more greenery in the parking lot, or do you wanna push that?
I, it's, it's, they meet the requirements, I just, I, I would love for them to look at that. Still things, it just seems like a lot of parking and that, that there might be an option to put more greenery in the parking lot. So maybe there's another option, maybe you can look at it. So I'm just asking you to look at it. I'm not, I mean, as you, as you kind of look at the plans and see if there's some way that you can add some more greenery.
One thing that, that you could easily do, it seems, unless I'm, I'm totally missing something, is the aisle, the first aisle on the right is you come into the parking lot. There are no parking spaces there. It seems like that's excessively wide. You could, it seems that that could be narrowed down to, I'm not sure what the width is there.
Well, it's, it's two-way traffic. We, we didn't wanna restrict the, the flow to one way anywhere in the lot.
But you could.
That would be undesirable, though, from the pop, point of the population that we serve.
So it would only be five parking spaces that you'd be inconveniencing, probably. Five parking spaces to the right of the 10?
To the right of the 10.
There's, there's a 10 in a circle.
Yeah.
So the ones to the left of that would easily go out the other side. So the ones to the right of that are the ones that would, you know- So the ones to the right of that are the ones that would, you know, might prefer to go out that driveway. I don't know. It's just a thought. It's a place that's got a lot of pavement that doesn't seem necessary, just something to think about.
Is that it from the planning board, then? All right, I'm just going to state that the findings in the staff report for major site plan review are as stated. And that the special permit for use also are as stated with probably two corrections. I'm going to just discuss them offline with Kate and the wording, but they're all in there and cover everything. Unless someone has something they want to comment on. This is what I tripped over on the previous application. So I just want to make it clear that we would take a vote after reviewing the draft decision with detailed findings and conditions. And any outstanding plans that have to be updated and resubmitted, adding bike racks, for example, and any results that would come from the CONCOM, just so that we're up to date and know what's in those plans. So Andy, would it be okay to to make the motion that we vote after we review the draft decision?
Yes, I, yeah, I would suggest, my suggestion would be to continue, depending on your next agenda, to the next meeting, approve at that meeting with the findings and so forth. You've noted, perhaps rephrasing of one or two of the items in there. And then the applicant will have time to get any tweaks to the plans that have been requested tonight back to us, and the board will have those in hand. The one thing I would add to that, actually, I know that there was some discussion of the freestanding sign. Just by example, Brad and your team, the, this is one that was recently approved by the board nearby. It's a pretty typical sign of standard in Newburyport, the sort of granite posts and a panel between. But, you know, something like that, I would imagine, would be acceptable. But if that sort of detail were added, that would kind of close out with the things that were discussed tonight and mentioned by Rick and others, would, I think, address the board's concerns that have been raised.
Great.
Could I ask when the next meeting is?
All right, we cannot take any more on June 3rd. I'm really sorry. It's going to have to be June 17th.
So can I, I don't know if there's any way to change your will on this. I just would ask that, we've been in the process now for several months. The tenant situation that they're in is has comes to an end. There is some lengthy period in order to build this. The building department has told us they will not review our plans until all of the, you know, regulatory reviews are done and appeal periods have elapsed. So in the interest of welcoming this tenant to this location or this owner, I'm wondering if there's any way you could make your decision today and then have us, as a condition, bring these amendments that you've requested to you, because that will cost us at least 30 days from what you're suggesting. And it's just 30 days of prime weather. So I make that appeal.
Andy, if we took the vote, but we don't review the decision until the next, say, 30 days, does that allow them to go forward? It's not really final, is it? I mean, that's, we don't have any any leverage if something comes up that was unforeseen and we have to go back on our vote. We can't do that, can we?
Yeah, I would have to say, I mean, unless the board, I appreciate all applicants, pretty virtually all applicants ask for that sort of thing, you know, for the most part, regardless of the time of year or, you know, unusual circumstances. But we've seen routinely over the years that when loose ends aren't closed up, that there's there's problems that result down the road, because there's a sloppy sloppy accounting of which plans are the accurate ones and whether the applicants followed up on details and so forth. I'm not convinced it's really 30 days. I think we're really talking about, well, I guess it depends on which meeting we're continuing to. If it's just the formality of approving the plans that meet everything that was talked about, I imagine that would would not take long. But but the board has to file the decision, and then there's a 20-day appeal period. So that would still be in play, you know, during that that period or it has to be taken into account.
I don't want to take a lot of time this late at night to go through the agenda for June 3rd, but we're going to have to make some adjustments. If this one takes priority over two site plan reviews that we haven't even started yet, but might be constrained by the time they were, the time lapse that they were submitted. So I'm going to put this on for June 3rd. But we have got to do some serious rejuggling. Otherwise, you guys will be coming on even later than you did tonight.
Yeah, might I also suggest, Bonnie, I think you've mentioned this before in discussions we've had in preparations for meetings, but it's 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 also correct that we have an unusual format right now with these online meetings. But we do have some big agenda items coming up. And if the applicant is understanding that, well, we might, you might be willing to put it on the agenda if we get to the end of the meeting and the board's already at 11 o'clock, and it's just not tenable to take up that additional matter, that the matter might still be continued another two weeks. But that would perhaps be a compromise in the middle there.
Well, I'm going to try not to do that. I'd like to be predictable and say what we have on the agenda we're going to do. So we'll try, first of all, to move some things, but we will put this on for June 3rd. But we can't do that until I get a motion.
Bonnie, excuse me, could we make sure if this is going to happen, that we have the final revised plans by whatever the deadline is, next Wednesday or Thursday? I'm not sure what the deadline is for it to get to us.
It's Wednesday. It's Wednesday.
Wednesday morning.
Okay, because that's, we're getting too many. This meeting has been crazy.
No, and 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 I don't think this is going to take too much time. If the if the scope is limited to the bike racks and the sign and any other discussion on adding, on modifying parking, I mean, it's it's shouldn't.
And the Conservation Commission changes.
And the Conservation Commission, they will, they will have probably closed their hearing and approved those changes the night before.
So you will be able to do the revised drainage and everything by next Wednesday?
Yeah, there's really no revised drain, it's just a small amount of regrading. That's, we're going to submit that by Tuesday, next Tuesday to Conservation, obviously copy the planning board.
I'd like, I'd like to thank the chair for this willingness to work with us and help us, and I much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I need a draft motion to continue and be prepared to review draft findings and conditions and take a vote.
So move to continue to June 3rd.
Yes.
I'll second that.
That's, I'm going to guess, MJ?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, good. So we got Rick and MJ, and I'll do a roll call. James Bruger? Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verity?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
And Bonnie Sontag, yes. Okay, we'll see you on June 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Very much appreciated.
All right, Zero Parker Street Minor Site Plan Review, they have, is that the, yes, they have asked for a continuance to, what's seven, July, July 1st? Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue to July 1st, Ann.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it. MJ.
Thank you. Roll call, James Bruger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verity?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. Thank you. Request for lot release at Shandell Estates. I'm assuming we have someone here to represent them. Or, yes, we should.
Yes, we have Mark Griffin here.
Let's hear it.
Hi, Chairman Sontag, this is Mark Griffin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I represent Patricia and Scott Kinter, the owners of the lot in Shandell Estates that we're seeking the release of. They own Lot 28 in the Shandell Estates subdivision. As you may know, the Shandell subdivision has long since been completed. The original record plan was recorded in about 1977. I've submitted a memorandum which, you know, runs through all this. My clients own the property from a deed from Yvonne Cormier Construction, who was the successor developer from Star Realty Trust, which was the original developer of the Shandell Estates. The Shandell Estates subdivision, when it was completed, there were covenants that were imposed upon the lots. Basically, all of the lots have been released except for Lot 28. Lot 28 just happens to be the lot that my client owns. It's also unusual in that all of the lots in the subdivision are in Newburyport, except for the subject lot. Lot 28 happens to be in Newbury. And another unique part of this subdivision decision was that the covenants, there was a specific provision of paragraph seven in one of the covenants, which states that Lot 28 should be dedicated to open space and recreation for the town of Newbury. As I have discussed with Planning Director Port, and I have set forth in the letter that I submitted to the board, the Newburyport Planning Board had no jurisdiction to put any kind of restriction on property in Newbury. The clear intent of the Newburyport subdivision rules and regulations is to benefit property within the city of Newburyport, not within the town of Newbury. I've cited the case of Costler versus Board of Appeals of Holden for that proposition. Notwithstanding the legal part of it, there is also the actual location of the lot, which does not serve the purpose that it may or may not have been dedicated for, which is open space and recreation for the town of Newbury. It is essentially a landlocked lot, which can only be accessed by, you know, a road through Newburyport. So there's no contiguous open space or parkland in Newbury that could benefit from this lot. And so it doesn't make sense for Newbury to actually use it for that. And and since 1977, no one from the town of Newbury nor anyone from the town, the city of Newburyport, has proceeded to actually try to utilize that lot for open space and recreation. I have been in contact with the planning director at the town of Newbury. And she has stated that Newbury has no interest in utilizing that lot for open space and recreation. In addition, and, oh, excuse me. I did have a letter from her, which I submitted, I just received it today, and I submitted it late to Director Port and to Caitlin Sullivan. And in that letter, Martha Taylor says that I do not see that Lot 28 has any benefit to the town of Newbury for use as open space for recreation purposes, or that the town would have any interest in maintaining this as open space or recreation land. And so you know, for all of those foregoing reasons, we're seeking a release from the two covenants that were imposed during the original subdivision. I have submitted a form release, which, you know, references the book and page for each covenant and request that the board grant that release. Thank you.
Bonnie, this is Andy. If I could just add a comment. We did, I think, you know, Mark and I had some discussions about this one. We did go back and look through the planning board's minutes to try to see if we could find any clarity. Usually, there's some sort of discussion or narrative. Nowadays, we keep, you know, more thorough minutes, but there wasn't really an explanation of what was going on there and the board's thinking or negotiation with the applicant at the time relative to this this open space. And that was partly why we asked for comment from the town of Newbury, because it wasn't clear if there was some historical discussion that had gone on between the two communities in some way. And so that's why Attorney Griffin had gotten this letter from Martha Taylor, the town of Newbury's town planner.
Thank you. Just cut to the chase here. There's a statement here in the staff report that Attorney Griffin hasn't addressed, and I just was wondering if it's still relevant. It says additionally, the applicant, in consideration of the language in the original covenant provision, has committed to provide, to provide a donation proposed to be $10,000 to the Newbury Parks Department. Provide, yes.
That that is, that that still stands. So if, in fact, the planning board is willing to grant the lot release, my client wants to donate $10,000 to the Parks Department.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. So any comments from any of the planning board members? Could I have a motion, please?
Bonnie, I'll try.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I not wait long enough? I, I, sorry.
I had just forgotten that I was on mute. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Should the, should the $10,000 donation be in the motion, or is that, is that? I was going to say the same thing, just to cut to the chase, as Bonnie said, it should be in the motion, I suggest.
That's fine. So would somebody like to make this motion as amended?
Rick, you spoke first. I would like, I'll do it. The motion would be to release Lot Number 20 of Shandell Estates subdivision for the provisions of, from provisions of the covenant, subject to the donation of $10,000 pledged, provided, submitted to the Newbury Parks Department.
And a second, please.
Second.
Okay, here we go. James Bruger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verity?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. Good to go, Attorney Griffin.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, 266 J Merrimack Street, minor modification to the special permit, I believe. Yes, oh, site plan review and special permit. And we have it described here in the staff report. Is there anybody representing this application?
Yes, we have a Jennifer Frizzell. You're here to speak, I assume?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yes, just to give you a little background, I was the real.
Excuse me, could you just tell us who you are?
Sure. My name's Jennifer Frizzell. I am representing both the developer and the owner, Christina Horn, who just closed on her home on April 15. So she, when she purchased this home, she had requested just a slight increase that would absolutely not block any site lines for anyone else, but just from the back of her home, all the way kind of to the, you know, just to connect it all the way to the fence, to provide just a little bit more privacy, going from what is currently a 41-inch height fence to 60 inches. So she's just looking to raise it 19 inches to provide a little more privacy. She's a single woman and wants to feel a little more comfortable. And when she purchased her home here, she asked if the developer would do that, if it was approved by the town, and they said that they would.
Andy, this is effectively higher than fences are allowed to be by ordinance, correct?
No, I don't see any reason why the board couldn't approve this change here. The, it was, I think you know, Bonnie, having been on the board for some time, there was a convoluted and delayed process with that whole development down there. a convoluted and delayed process with that whole development down there. Had the, had this fence change been towards the water side, I think there might be some hesitation from us or the board maybe about blocking someone's sightline or view shed, but I think in this case, it doesn't really have any of those impacts. It's basically facing a parking lot that we have at Cashman Park. So I don't see there's any reason for the office to object to the change that's being proposed here, although the board may want to speak to, it may have concerns of its own or may want to speak to the nature of the fence that's being installed.
Well, my question was, it is, is it will be effectively higher than ordinance allows for a fence, correct?
There's not a prohibition on a 60-inch fence. Is there some particular provision you're looking at or thinking of?
I thought we only had, oh, 60 inches is how many feet?
Five.
It's only five. Yeah, well, the ordinance allows for five feet plus an extra foot of something if it's see-through, right? I don't know the ordinance well enough to know what is allowed. This is close enough.
It's only a five-foot fence, so, you know, from our perspective, it certainly falls within, below that six-foot.
Good. That's all I wanted to know. Okay, anything else from any of the other board members?
I have a question, Bonnie. This is Tanya. Are you planning on using the same fence type, or are you changing the type of fence?
It'll be the same fence type, but they can't just stick the fence on top of the post, so that entire fence area will be replaced, but be exactly, you know, they're going to match it the same as it can.
Okay. I have no other questions.
This is Don. I was going to, just a follow-up question to Tanya's. I was thinking from a transition, are you just going to have the fence on both sides, just meet there that looks like, especially on the one side where it's 41 inches, is it possible, just, you know, sometimes you see them curved down or something? And I agree, it's not a big, it's more from aesthetic point of view.
Yeah, the fence on the back of the house that kind of butts the towel parking lot right there is much, is already much higher than this side fence. So it'll get a little bit closer to kind of almost connecting, but it's, the other one's still a little bit taller than what that one is.
Okay, so we'll have three different, we'll have three different fence heights. Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
But it'll be pretty close.
Is that it? Then I'll take a motion to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification for 266 J Merrimack Street.
Bonnie?
Yes?
Can I modify that motion and just add that the, provided that the new fence is of the same design as the existing fence?
Sure.
Can I make that motion?
Bonnie, this is Tanya. I'll second it.
Thank you. Matches. I'm just making a note. Okay, where's my list? James Bruegger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verity?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. Okay, you're good to go.
Bonnie, it's Linda. I didn't catch who made the motion and who seconded.
Rick made the motion. Who seconded it?
Tanya.
Tanya.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Okay, I'm starting to repeat myself. Request for minor modification, the Reserve at Bashaw Farm. We, yes, go to Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At least to me, telling him across the 30 Green Street on behalf of the Reserve at Bashaw Farm. The request we submitted about a month ago involved the release of special condition 17 for lots 3, 5, 7, and 11. You might recall that the board allowed a lot release to, not lot release, excuse me, the release of building permits for lots 1, 4, 10, 14, and 15, because all those lots were accessible to the fire department off of Colby Farm Road or back driveways for during construction. The applicant has, or the developer has installed the water lines, fire hydrants, sewer mains, storm systems, and done the base code essentially of the road. National Grid, who has been aware of what's needed to happen out here since August, finally came out just before this letter was submitted and said that they would not be able to do the installation of the underground utilities in the road for six months, which is a huge problem for starting construction on houses that are also now under agreement, namely 3, 5, 7, and 11. And since this letter has been submitted to you, 2, 13, and 12. So the applicant's requesting that the board allow him to obtain building permits, quite frankly, for the rest of the units, subject to Andy's review. And while the, we're waiting for the electric and other utilities to be installed by N Grid, I included a email from Chief, Deputy Chief Bradbury, indicating that he was fine with it because the road was of sufficient construction that he could get back there, and he didn't have an issue from a fire department access point of view. So as a reminder, this is just the release of the building permits and not the lot releases. You have a covenant on these properties. This is merely the release of the building permits so they can commence construction.
Okay, any comments from the planning board? I'll assume I waited long enough. There are no comments? Oh, is there someone?
No, I was just going to make a motion to approve it.
So, read it from the full, the motion is to.
I don't have it in front of me, Bonnie.
I'll read it for you. Motion to deem request minor and approve the minor modification to the subdivision decision and the special permit decision.
Thank you. If I could, Madam Chair, so we had, we had only requested 3, 5, 7, and 11. Since that time, as I indicated, we have lots 2, 13, and 12 also. So my request would be that you give authority to Andy to allow the release of the building permits as the lots come up, so that we don't have to come in every time to do this since the access has been approved by the fire department.
So you're including 2, 13, and 12 with 3, 5, 7, and 11?
Yes.
And there are still more to go?
6, 8, and 9.
Is that okay? Is there any reason not to do that, Andy?
I have no objection if the board wishes. I think that's fine.
Is there, is there an issue with not having given notice of this proposed action?
It's not noticed anyway. It's minor.
Yeah, considering it's a minor change to be, it doesn't substantively change what was approved by the planning board in the first place, so I consider that to be a minor change that doesn't require a new notice to anybody.
And I guess my only other question would be is, when the fire department had reviewed initially the lots 3, 5, 7, and 11, and now we may release the remaining lots, is the road similar? Do you know, Andy, the fire department, I'm guessing they didn't look at all of the lots, but I'm assuming that the lot is some type of a base course or something?
Right.
Yeah, effectively, the fire department's going to have that basic access to the lot just to deal with any kind of emergency that might arise.
For all of them, for all the remaining lots, just not 3, 5, 7, 11, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Sorry.
So the motion is to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification plus the amendment to allow release of remaining lots as they come up by Andy. He'll clean up that language. Okay. So, Tanya, is that what, were you, yeah, you're making that motion?
I am making that motion, exactly what you just said.
Right, okay. And I need a second.
Second, Rick.
Okay. Roll call. James Bruegger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Thank you. Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verity?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. You've got it.
Guys, it's been great. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes, just to let everybody know that Don, Rick, and I have sent edits to Linda. They're all agreed among the three of us, a couple of changes of wording and some, some very minor grammatical changes. Did anyone else read them and want to comment? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, please. 5, 6, 20.
So moved, Rick.
And a second?
Don.
Thank you, Don. Roll call. James Bruegger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Jane, I wasn't at the meeting.
That's right. Good. Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verity?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. Andy, if you have any updates, I dare you to make them right now.
Can I get just two seconds? Just one thing.
You're going to have to deal with nine people going off the meeting before you finish, but go ahead.
Okay, it's a heads up. Just, we had a discussion earlier today, there's going to be some sort of meeting we're having, or a couple of meetings we're having internally, and at some point, just think amongst yourselves in the coming weeks, we might want to circle back and have some sort of a joint meeting between the planning board and Conservation Commission to confirm and work, if necessary, with the developer of the Evergreen Commons project to make sure that they fulfill any remaining conditions. There's a couple of outstanding issues that some of the departments have concerns about, and we just want to make sure that those things don't get dropped. So we can talk further about that, but I just wanted to kind of throw that across your radar, that we thought it might be beneficial mainly to make sure that the new owners that are there, they're a little bit confused, perhaps by the developer in some instances, as to what, whose responsibility is what and what happens here. It might be beneficial for the planning board and CONCOM to make it clear in a public forum where the developer's responsible for things, for compliance and things like that, versus, you know, pointing the finger to the city. So, just a thought.
All right, you and I will talk about that and figure out a way to make it happen.
Yep, understood.
Okay, everybody, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. We really do have two full on agenda for June 3rd, and I'm going to work with Andy in the next couple of days to sort that out. But it looks like we can set ourselves up for another late night that night, or even if we do, clean it up a little bit. So, thank you. That's all I have, that's.
The motion to adjourn, or that was it, right?
Wait, thank you, thank you, Bonnie, for having energy through to the very end.
Great.
Job, you know, you can rise to the occasion. I hate to tell you what I'm doing after this. Thank you. Okay.
I think Don's right. We need a motion to go home.
Well, do it. Do it. Anna, you make, thank you, Ann. And a second?
I'll second MJ.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, I have to roll call. James Bruegger?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verity?